Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Quick learners. Thank you. Ruth, you want to speak?
No.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And do you have a closed session report?
Pursuant to the government code, we have nothing to report.
Let's see here. Elaine Freeman, would you lead us in the pledge? Did you hear me? I want you to lead the pledge.
Please, say please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elaine, and I'm sorry I didn't make it. I get down to this neat thing here. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lewanos?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protem Litzter?
Here.
Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
Okay, it's time for the agenda review. Is there any items for the review?
Mayor, I'd like to pull consent item 6-2. It's such a substantive report, I don't believe that it should be in the consent calendar. I'd like a full report on that. To the public.
Mr. City Manager.
Pull for a discussion, for a discussion item, or bring it back on another meeting?
Well, that's why I asked about the deadline. I'd like the public to see this report, and if it's on consent, you know, not everyone gets to hear all the details. I know there's a staff report that's out there, but I'd like for the public to hear a full report on it.
Should we be bringing that up at the time that we discuss the consent?
Well, you asked for agenda review, so I would ask for it to be presented at a later meeting, so that there's a, it's not on the consent calendar, so that it's on the regular agenda.
She can make a motion. It can be seconded, and we can vote on it.
There you go.
Okay, I move to pull consent item 6-2 for inclusion in a regular agenda at this or a future meeting, so that the public can have transparency and accountability.
I'm not going to second it, but I believe it can be pulled at the time of the calendar, and we can have that discussion then, and talk about it.
That's correct. You can do that.
So, pull, and at that time, if it still warrants, we can make that happen at that time as well. But that allows us to continue discussing it during the consent calendar. That would be my recommendation.
So, we'll just wait until the consent calendar comes up, and we'll address it like we do every other meeting.
Okay, well, I'd like the ability to have full discussion, because often we seem very rushed when we pull items from the consent calendar. So that's why I asked for it to be on the regular agenda.
We can do it at that time, then add it to the agenda.
We can add it to the regular agenda?
It might have to be at a different date.
Is the question, do you want the public to have more review of it, or you have a lot of questions on it?
Both.
Okay, so we can certainly address the questions that you may have. If the council wants to continue it to another meeting, we can certainly do that to allow for additional time. So we can address that when we get to the consent calendar.
Okay, so when I pull it, then I can make the motion, then?
You can ask your questions, and then if you want to make a motion, you can certainly make it then. Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else for agenda review? Okay, next item. 1A.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Motion and second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, declaration of conflict. If any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest, or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any manner, matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this, excuse me, at this time. Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1. Presentation of a proclamation declaring the month of March 2022 as Women's History Month, and Samantha Arquibright is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. Each March, Women's History Month provides an opportunity to honor the trailblazing women who have shaped communities across the country. And whereas the 2022 theme for Women's History Month is women providing healing, promoting hope, to recognize that throughout history, women across cultures have provided healing and hope. And whereas throughout history, despite hardship, exclusion, and discrimination, women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made vital contributions in recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women who have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and the peace movement, to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas women continue to lead in the COVID-19 pandemic as vaccine researchers, public health officials, and essential workers to keep our economy moving forward. Now therefore, the month of March 2022 is hereby proclaimed Women's History Month in the city of Simi Valley, to encourage residents to recognize and celebrate the women in their lives who make history every day.
Thank you. I have a little something to say to the Women's History Month. Number one, I celebrate the advances that women have made. I think we can see that we're doing very well by the number of women on our dais here tonight. But I'd also like to give a special thanks to the women, probably we're talking back in the 50s in a general sense. The women stayed home and were homemakers and raised children. And did so much for their children, bringing them up. They're trailblazers, just like the people today, the women today that have gone on to become astronauts and federal judges and Supreme Court judges and all. So my hat's off to all women.
Mayor, if I may make a statement?
Councilmember Lewanos?
I'd just like to clarify that today we have women, and even back then, we have women that are working full-time and raising children. And that's phenomenal as well. I just want to recognize that.
Okay. Elaine?
Actually, I just, normally I don't say anything about presentations, but as you're reading this, I was thinking of my two grandmothers, and I just thought, I want to say their names. Elaine Brockbut Brink Evans, who I was named for, in the early 1900s, got her master's degree and created works of art for the World's Fair, and raised a family and did wonderful things artistically, went to college at graduate school, when many women didn't. My other grandmother, Dr. Alice Chandler Pack, who after raising six children, went back to school and got her PhD, and developed the TESL program, teaching English as a second language, and traveled the world. Anyway, I just think there's some wonderful women in my life, and I just had to say thank you for recognizing all of the women who, throughout history. And so, thank you for doing that.
Okay, next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 2. Public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have been provided to the city council. However, they will not be read by the clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted, followed by speakers who are signed on to Zoom to speak for this public statements item for two, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, we have no speaker cards, but we will check with Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. At this time, I would like to ask, we have one attendee on Zoom, and would you raise your hand using the Zoom function? Or star nine if you're on a telephone? All right, looks like the person on Zoom does not wish to speak at this time.
Okay, so no speakers? No speakers, next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 3A1. Selection of two city council members to conduct Community Projects Grant Review Committee interviews. And Mara Mulch is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. I want to take an opportunity to introduce one of the newest members of the Environmental Services Department, who joined us during COVID, so she hasn't had the opportunity to present to you yet. She will be administering our Community Projects Grant Program. Jennifer Del Toro, a management analyst in the department, will be presenting tonight's report.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The city council established the Community Projects Grant Program for the dispersment of funds received from waste management for community programs and projects. The funding requests from local nonprofit programs or organizations are reviewed by a review committee prior to consideration by the city council. The review committee consists of one representative from each of the four neighborhood councils, one representative from the Council on Aging, one representative from the Youth Council, and one community at-large member. The community at-large member is interviewed and nominated for appointment by two city council members. The recruitment for this position opened on March 2nd and will close on March 15th to allow staff sufficient time to assess any potential conflicts of interest of applicants, which will remove the need for an alternate. To date, we have received 11 applications. To accommodate the program's timeline and ensure timely distribution of funds to the recipient organizations, interviews need to be scheduled the week of March 21st. All the nominees for the review committee will be presented to the city council for appointment at the April 11th meeting. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council select a subcommittee of two council members to conduct interviews and nominate a prospective community at-large member to the Community Projects Grant Review Committee. This concludes the report, and staff is available if there are any questions.
No questions? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lewanos?
I don't have questions, but I would like to volunteer to be on this committee, as I've never had this position before.
Okay.
I would also like to do it, as I've never sat on that committee either.
I'll do it, too.
Okay.
Okay, so we have three, and we need two. Correct? Two, okay, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for myself and Councilmember Kavanaugh to represent the committee for the interviews.
Well, I was going to offer to back off, because most likely, I'm going to know a few of those committees that are applying for the grants. So I don't know if that would be a conflict of interest or not, to just select the community at-large person?
It could be, so.
I know my Rotary Club is applying, so, okay. So I will rescind my request.
Withdraw your nomination?
Thank you.
Okay, so we have two. We have Councilmember Judge, oops, I see Elaine wants to speak now.
Actually, I'm sorry, I was going to make a motion, that we nominate Councilmember Lewanos and Councilmember Judge to serve as the panel to select the one at-large grant commission position.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 3B1. Presentation by Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District regarding the status of the Arroyo Simi Greenway. And here to present, to begin the presentation is Board Member Elaine Freeman.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the council. It's a privilege to be here. The Arroyo Greenway project started actually and originated with the city council. City Councilmember Williamson and City Councilmember Zoika came to the full council and asked that the Greenway Committee be formed. As part of that committee, there was the Watershed Protection District, the County Supervisor's Office, I believe, Planning Commissioner, and the Park District, along with the two council members. We met for, I'd say, well over a year regularly, hired a consultant to do a specific plan. That specific plan came to the council and was approved. Frankly, none of us expected anything to happen within at least 20 years, just looking at the cost of the project. And fortunately, Prop 64, one of our staff people, was going through it and realized that it would probably qualify for a grant. So the state did grant us over $800,000 for Phase 1. And we had a dedication at the trailhead right at Sequoia. And then, even the state came down for that event. It was really very nice. And then there was a second half to that grant of equal amount. And we've had a dedication at the Rancho Simi Community Park doing that phase. But it's important to remember that this originated from the city. And so the Park District has been able to partner with the city, and I think really have made the Arroyo Greenway a more usable and better place for this community. And I think we've really been fortunate to get other grants, the latest one being from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And it's not going to take 20 years to finish it, and that's the good part. It was, it was a very creative process. The specific plan was, there was a lot of input. We even held community outreach to get input on what the community might want. So, once the city approved the specific plan, that's when we started to move forward. And I have four slides that kind of show the first phase. And I'm going to say I don't know how to start the PowerPoint. Oh, it's up there, good, okay. This was part of the document for the Arroyo Simi Greenway. And you can see that it tells a bit of the history. It does not show that the County Supervisor's Office was involved, but it was. And it had several goals, which the state very much appreciated. And one of the other things that we thought would be, provide alternate transportation. It does tie into several industrial locations. So if people could use it to go to work, that would be a great thing. Next. Created the Arroyo Greenway, and it was adopted, I can't believe it, in 2011. A specific plan, and here we are 10 years, almost going on 11 years later, and we've made great progress. And I think it's very exciting for this community. I mean, the Arroyo is a very major part of this community, and we might as well make the most of it and make it usable. And I was talking to some people from Moore Park, and they'd like to continue it on through Moore Park. And there is a potential for it to go all the way to the sea. I mean, that would be really exciting for people to be able to do that. So with this, I'll close my comments and turn it over to Director Abella. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm going to briefly speak to you, and Dan will go into more detail. But right now, what I want to talk about is the current phase, which is Phase 4, and that covers the path from Sequoia to Tappo. We are now in the planning stages of that, and getting close to the end of the planning stages, and hope to be starting the improvements, actually, late summer, early fall, and have that completed by the end of this year or early next year. There's three points I want to make about that. First of all, I want to thank the city for your contribution and participation in that, again, another joint project between the city and the Park District, and we really love those. So that's the first thing. The second thing that makes the improvements to the path so important to us is it's something for everyone. It doesn't matter your status or your income level, for cyclists, and walkers, and runners. It's something that our whole community can use, and that's what makes it so beautiful. And in light of the pandemic, and even post-pandemic, we know those activities have become more important and more prevalent. So that's what makes it such a neat thing. And then the third thing is something that I've always believed in since I've been on a park board, and that's that our government belongs to the people. This project has been expedited because of citizen involvement. I was at a function, and I was approached by citizens who I had not met before. And they brought to my attention the fact that that area between Sequoia and Tappo was in dire need of improvement. So I brought it to our district manager and our board, and we discovered that we had this grant money, and we've expedited the project, and with your help, and our district involved, this is going to get done sooner rather than later. And that's a credit to everyone, but especially the members of our community who cared so much about this. So again, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, thanks for having us. We always appreciate the partnership with the city, no matter what it is we're doing. And I think we've done really well as two agencies, recognizing that. I've got Wayne Nakaoke, who is our Director of Planning and Maintenance, who can help me, assist me with any technical questions you might have regarding the project and the phases. And certainly want to thank our board for being here and supporting us this evening. Just a little bit more of this. Just a little bit more, this isn't meant to be read, but within the specific plan, it's about a, I don't know, about a 200-page document. It's very detailed. It's, I would, it's almost more detailed than I would call a specific plan, but it lays out a whole lot of amenities and improvements along the Arroyo from the east to the west end of Simi. So, this is just an example of about half the city and the improvements in the areas where those are going to be made. This is the other half of the city. I think we provided the PowerPoint, so you can look at that in a little more detail. So, Phase 1, as Director Freeman mentioned, that was completed. That was a, about a two-mile project. We actually, as a part of those projects, what I would call is access and safety is our first layer along the Arroyo. So, the Arroyo has been, had been closed off and, quite frankly, not very safe for all those years preceding 2011. So, the first layer of what we're doing is we're providing access and safety to use the trail. That includes trail entrances, entrances, rest areas, racks, benches, and receptacles. The first phase was a Prop 84 grant. The total of that was about 1.3 million, about 800,000 supported by a grant, and about 500 of that supported by the Park District and the city. The first phase went from Sequoia to Arranger. So, this was our first endeavor into completing the specific plan. These are entrances, so really important. If we want to make it accessible, we've got to create entrances so people can access it. So, with each end of the phase, the specific plan identifies strategic access points, so folks, whether they're biking, walking, whatever they want to do on the trail, they have easy access to the Arroyo. This is some, what was implemented, what was put in place as part of Phase 1. So, you can see the benches there with a nice paved trail. That's an entryway at Rancho Simi Park, Duck Pond. That's a landscaped entryway. There's the photo of the dedication. There's an example of an entryway. This is a little pocket area that was installed as a part of Phase 1. You can see how nice the trail there is on the bottom right with some benches and trash receptacles. This is a good, I like this photo, because you can see on the upper left, this is what the Arroyo looked like when I talked about access. This is the entry point to, at the Sequoia location. And after the project, you can see it's very inviting and open for folks to use, so... I think at the time that the council and the folks were working on that back in 2010, 11, we thought we had this somewhat, you know, kind of blighted, unusable wash, so to speak. And I think at the time, the council and those involved felt, hey, let's make this a city asset, rather than a kind of a, an eyesore in the community. Let's open it up, let's beautify it, and let's make it a good, usable public community for everybody in the community to use. Phase 2, not going to go into a whole lot of detail. It was an additional 1.6, 7 miles, supported by 1.3, about 1.3 million. Again, a Phase 2 grant, as Director Freeman mentioned, with additional financial support from the city and the Park District. Phase 2 was kind of two phases. One was Arranger Road to First Street. That was about a mile, a little over a mile. And then, the second part of Phase 2 was Madera Road to Stargaze. New trail entries. These are an example of some of the amenities that were included as part of Phase 2. This is down at Stargaze. You can see the nice new paved trail there in Tier Ahada Park, which allows you to access Tier Ahada Road and Stargaze Park on the west end of town. The left-looking picture there is an enhanced trailway that we installed as a part of Phase 2. Madera Road looking west. Another good example of a before and after, so that's what it looked like before, a kind of gravelly dirt area, which then was converted into a nice, safe pedestrian bikeway. Phase 3 was a two-mile stretch. Same type of amenities were added, about a $1.4 million project, as you can see, largely flooded by state grant funds. Phase 3 was Madera to LA, and then, there was a connection to Fifth Street near Sinaloa Middle School. As part of Phase 3, this was a rather large endeavor to put a crossing across at Fifth Street. At this particular point, there wasn't an easy way to get from one side of the trail to the other, so at this location, there was a, a bridge crossing that was installed. Phase 4 is underway now, and Director Abala mentioned that, and the R effort to expedite that. It's additional 1.6 miles from Sequoia to Tappo Street, will include some new trail entrances along with related amenities. Prop 68 was a park-related bond fund that was passed by the voters about three or four years ago now, and the grand tour of the funds was the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. There's the location of Phase 4 from Sequoia to Tappo Street, with improved trails on one side during part of the way and both sides on the other, other part of the trail. So, looking forward, I just wanted to comment on what Elaine mentioned. Looking back, there was a couple of expectations when we started the visioning process. One was that we, I will call it a generational project. We expected that the total vision would be carried out over a number of years. Elaine mentioned 20 years, 25 years, so we knew that it was going to take a long time to carry out the complete vision. Obviously, we're about 10 years into it and have made some exceptional progress. The second expectation at the time was that it would mostly be funded by state grants. So, state bike and pedestrian grants, transportation, active transportation. We knew at the time there was heavy interest at that at the state level, and that we, as a community, whether it be the city or the Park District, were going to avail ourselves of those opportunities to make this a showcase of our grant requests for bike and pedestrian type of projects in town. And to date, we've been successful with that. So, we've got over, well over, you know, almost $5 million in grants to support this in the last number of years. Looking forward, proposed Phase 5 is going to do a little bit more of the same, access and safety. That's going to, the proposal is from Tappo Street to Stern Street, and then, there's a connection from LA Avenue down to Cochrane Street. Phase 6 would take it a little bit further eastward from, from Sterns to Yosemite. So, once we complete Phase 5 and 6, we're going to have what I call the first layer, somewhat so this done, access and, access and safety. After we complete Phase 5 and 6 as a community, then we'll have some decisions to make. One is, 1 and 2 on the list on the right is when we, the next level would be enhancing it to make it more of a linear park, so to speak. We'll be, consider landscape planting at entries. And then, with the plan calls for within the greenways, kind of putting in pocket parks, doing some planting, putting in some lighting, some of those things. That's going to be, some of the implications there are, there's going to be maintenance and utility costs once we start to do that. So, currently, there's no water or electricity out along the Arroyo. So, after we complete Phase 5 and 6, we'll have to make some decisions on what type of effort we'll want to make there. And then, as Director Freeman mentioned also, we've, we've talked about connections to Moore Park, and then, connections eastward to Corriganville Park. Going east from Yosemite to Corriganville, there's some acquisition, property acquisition. We don't own all the property there, either us or the city, so there have to be decisions made there. But if we're prioritizing this and we're getting state grant funding, there'll be a decision there, do we want to kind of enhance what we are, have already done and improve it? Or do we want to make those connections going out eastward and westward? So, with that, that concludes our report, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Elaine Litzler.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Pernick. I very, and Elaine, and Ed, I appreciate all of your presentation this evening. And just to give you some context, I probably bicycle the Arroyo every week, the entire range, but both directions, and so that's, that's my personal experience of knowing intimately on a bicycle. And so, my questions are probably involved from that perspective. And I, and I appreciate knowing where we're at with the phases. I noticed that throughout, it talks about direction and information signs. I, it's not clear in my mind which side, for instance, of the Arroyo is going to be my, the through route, because it starts and stops as you go through. Is there a way that possibly some attention could be made specifically to letting new people, pedestrians, bicyclists? I now know when I have to go across, and vice versa, but is there a way maybe that the signage could be a little more clear throughout the entire, at least until, as the phases develop, of course, they'll be multi-sided or whatever, but is it possible to say, trail continues north side, south side, et cetera?
I've had some suggestions on that from others as well, and we could, I think some of that directional signage was intended to be in later phases.
Right.
But that being said, recognizing that we're getting heavy use yet, I'm sure we can work with Public Works and also our staff to put some more mapping and some better signage out there, so you know where you're headed.
And I will tell you, it is a jewel. It is a delight to be able to go down there and bicycle safely from one end to the other. So, I do want to say, thank you, thank you for making it happen. I know that I've been part, part of cleanups in the past, and it is actually in decent shape, but obviously, it's a place where it's easy for people to put things on occasion. I guess what is the, my question is, what is the protocol for, for groups that want to come and do cleanups, et cetera? What is the standard operation? Do they contact your office?
Yeah, I might have Director Fujaki and Wayne help me on this, but we're not allowed to go down into the Arroyo proper. That's flood control channel, and there's safety issues there. So, generally, getting into the Arroyo down below the banks is, has to be coordinated with the Tarrant County Watershed Protection District. Anything up above the edges of the banks along the trail itself is maintained by the Park District, so if there's groups of folks that want to get together and do some cleanups on the upper edges of it, we can certainly coordinate that through the Park District. And then, again, down in the Arroyo where we see trash and things like that.
Is watershed.
That's got to be coordinated with watershed, yes.
So, if a Boy Scout troop or a Girl Scout troop wanted to go down, and they, they can't go down, or unless they coordinate with the watershed.
Right, and I'm not even sure that the watershed would let folks down in there. Maybe either Ron or Wayne can help me with that. We've done a few cleanups in there, but I'm not exactly sure.
Our Neighborhood Council sponsors Arroyo cleanup usually once a year. I think we postponed it with COVID, but it is a permitting process that we have to go through.
Gotcha, okay.
But more than happy to make sure that, invite them when we do the Neighborhood Council cleanup, because the public is happy to attend.
And one of the, one of the questions, I noticed in Elaine's slide, it talks about providing alternative transportations was one of the goals initially, which makes sense. That's a great way to get to work. But as I've bicycled, in fact, my office is near there, I was looking, where could I get out? You know, in other words, are, are industrial properties allowed to put in fences that allow immediate access to their property, or how does that get coordinated?
Good question. As I indicated, the specific plan has several entry points from businesses and locations. I think they were designed in areas that allowed public access, so I'll have to follow up on that one, whether or not individual businesses could open themselves up to the access to the Arroyo.
Okay, and I'd love to know that. That would, that'd be great. But again, I'll let others ask questions, but I'm just delighted that we have this jewel in our community and just see it, something that we can make better and better and better, and just really a wonderful thing. So, thank you for...
Councilmember Litzler, if I could, Wayne, do you, do you know if we can allow private businesses to access the Arroyo? I don't believe we can, but, yeah.
So, the same goes for residential properties that abut that?
They're private residential, that's why we're creating public access at those different access points, but to allow, yeah, to allow private, either private residential or private industrial access to that. Something we could explore, but I don't think right now that we're very excited about accessing the Arroyo from private property.
I know we only have, there's been a couple of multifamily projects west of Arranger that have, but they've done that through the city's, the development, the plan development permit process that's approved by the city and the planning commission. For, I think for us to open, to open it up, I think there would be encroachment permits and other things that we would want to make sure, and then, i- if it's going out, it's also an in, so we have to be careful of that access. You don't want private property owners accessing it on a regular basis, because that could open their property up to people coming in as well.
And I guess I was just thinking like gated lock that would allow them to get in and out, but I, okay.
We're more than happy to pursue that. We can have further discussions on that as well.
Gotcha, well...
I would suggest you have the police department and fire department involved in any access discussions like that, because I can definitely see it's going to create a problem for them.
Well, thank you, Dan. Again, appreciate, appreciate the efforts they're going.
Councilmember Levinos?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions, and some of them are for me, and some of them are for the public, and some of them are for both of us. So, my first question is, can you tell me what hours the Arroyo is open? Does it open? Does it close? When does it open? Does it close? Because people ask me all the time.
I believe we open the gates, what's that, dawn to dusk, yep.
And does that mean that the gates close? Like, you have that beautiful portal of entry, then do the gates close at dusk then?
Yes, I believe we lock the, we lock the entry points at dawn. We open them at dawn and lock them up at dusk.
Okay. And have there been any, any safety issues with regard to, like, people trying to go in there after dusk, or has it been?
We've had occasional complaints in terms of safety and pedestrian injury and such. We've maybe had a couple in the last three or four years that I'm aware of in terms of, you know, bike riders, but in terms of populations and things, I can't think of a whole lot of calls for service out there. We do get the occasional complaint that there's homeless encampments and folks bedding down, down there, and we've addressed that and tried to get them onto services, but we haven't, quite frankly, had a whole lot of trouble or complaints out of the Arroyo in the last few years.
Okay, and when there is, I know we don't get rain very often. I'm hoping that changes soon, but when it does rain, do you, like, heavily, because it is, you know, a place for water to go when it does rain? Do you close the gates so that, you know, there's no safety issue?
Yeah, certainly if watershed and there was a significant event. It takes quite a bit to fill the Arroyo up, and, but I know there's access there, but we do close it during rain events, yes.
Okay, great.
During small rain events, probably not. During larger ones, when the water flow is flowing pretty high, we'd close it, yeah.
Okay, good. And then, you know, it's closed, people know it's off limits, you can't go.
Right.
And even though it's opened on the dusk, but yeah.
It's, it's a place, well, yeah. Theoretically, we close the gates, yes.
Okay, and then, are there private events that use the Arroyo? And if they do, do they pay a permit price? Who do they pay that to?
I think we've had some run profits, maybe do some runs, 5Ks there, and potentially some rides. But other than nonprofits sponsoring those kind of things, I can't think of any, you know, private use down there, so...
And is it, when, if it's used by a nonprofit, does the rest of the public know, or are there signs, or they're like, hey, there's an event here today?
Yeah, usually if a nonprofit's doing a 5K or some kind of event, they'll advertise that event, because they want people to participate. So, whoever's conducting the special event would be advertised through the nonprofit conducting the event, and then, we usually do some advertising for that in support of the nonprofit.
And that is, is that permit issued by you or by the city?
By us.
By the Park District?
Actually, I think the, the city, we have certain permits that we also, the city and us jointly approve. I think events on the Arroyo, because it'd be crossing city streets and public right-of-way, would be a joint approval by the Park District and the city.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is because there was an event that used part of the Arroyo that was called the Sombrero Event, that, you know, the nonprofit used language that was not very appropriate, a lot of cultural misappropriation, and so, I wanted to see, you know, who is accountable for that? If you approve the permit, if the city approved the permit?
We usually, we wouldn't necessarily control content like that. We leave that up to the nonprofit. We permit access, and if it's an eligible group that's allowed to use any public space, we'd go ahead and permit it, but in terms of the content itself and details of the special event, it's not something that probably, I would imagine, the Park District staff would get into.
Okay, because you just said that you will advertise the event, so that's why I'm asking.
Okay. Yeah, if it was inappropriate, we probably wouldn't advertise it ourselves.
Okay, and is there a process to make sure that the event is appropriate? Or just any nonprofit can come and, and ask for it?
Pretty open about folks that use our group, so anybody that wants to use not just the Arroyo, but park space, you know, we're pretty open in who uses the public space for public events, so we don't do a whole lot of policing of that, so to speak.
Okay, and I recognize the, the right of free speech guaranteed by First Amendment.
Correct, and that, yeah, there's First Amendment.
Yeah, I also recognize that, that, you know, it is city-endorsed and government-endorsed, and, you know, to flag that, and, you know, to be aware of those kind of events that stereotype Mexicans, that stereotype Latinos, which represent, you know, 40% of our population here in the city.
Yeah.
And so...
So, permitting process isn't per se an endorsement. Certainly, if it were an event that the city or, or at least the Park District were supporting, obviously, you know, be a sponsor of that then, but just because, when we permit things in the parks or permit things on the trail, it doesn't necessarily mean it's an endorsement of use of that property.
Okay, I would just ask...
It's a permit to use it, yep.
I would just ask in the future that that be considered.
Yep, thank you.
DeeDee Kavanaugh?
Thank you, kind sir. I just wanted to congratulate you, having been in on the beginning. Well, not the very beginning, but almost the beginning of the specific plan as a member of the Park Board. You guys have, it's just become such a phenomenal Arroyo Greenway and asset to our city. And I know how hard the board has worked, the current board, passports, as well as the staff to get it done. I want to give Robin Walker credit for the first grant. I mean, she did a great job bringing that in. I know Wayne and his group.
And Brian Chung at the time.
And Brian too. Yeah, he went to Moore Park, so we're not counting him anymore. No, just kidding, Brian. Just kidding. And just give them credit. And I know Wayne and his staff, everyone has done a great job. And I just wanted to congratulate everybody and say I'm very proud of the Arroyo, even though my mother still calls it the Wash. I can't get her to change that. But to see what our, our future plans are and what's going to be available for all of us, I think is wonderful. The exit at Sinaloa is great for a lot of the kids that can ride that safely instead of being on the street. I know my daughter works at that school and that is used, so that's a big positive also. So just, I want to say congratulations and thanks for all your hard work. I know we have two other directors here, Kate O'Brien and Brian Diner, that weren't introduced, along with Ed and Elaine. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you for all you've done.
I just wanted to comment, I think the project's been very well received. I remember there's some hesitation back when we were contemplating it and opening up the Wash or the, we call it the Arroyo Greenway now. But I would, I gotta say 10 years later that we get just a lot of compliments, at least as far as we are now, especially during COVID, when all of us were, I mean, there was a whole lot of people that were using that trail, and we're very thankful that we, the two government agencies, had worked together to open that up for community use. So it's been a very well received from my perspective.
Councilmember Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for coming out. Thank you to all the Park Board members that came out, talked about this. I appreciate our partnership on this. I think it's a very good addition to our city. Thank you again for helping and doing your part, because you got the, you got the heavy lift on this stuff most of the time.
We have Phase Five. We're already, we're already identifying funds. We've talked to Director Fujaki and Brian about finding a source for our next phase, Phase Five. So we're already on that, your staff is.
Did you say hooty lip?
I said heavy lift. They do the heavy lifting on it.
Oh, boy, I was lost. Thank you for the clarification. Dan, I have a, I hope a quick question. Is when we originally started this, I asked that we meet with the fire department and look for locations that they may want anchor points, because even though we haven't seen it in years, when they, the Wash fills up, it gets quite violent. And there have been times where rescues were needed. We have daredevil children that think it's a great place to go rafting and, you know, riding their.
Right.
Boards and what have you. Anyway, I, I'd just like to remind and ask that you meet with the fire department and make sure they survey it, because they've, they've got a challenging job when somebody's in that water.
Yeah, I would recommend we regularly meet at the OC as part of the Hazard Preparedness and Mitigation Plan. I'll request that that be agendized at our next group meeting with both police, fire, and the Park Districts.
Thanks, thanks. And thank you, I agree with the others on, it's a great addition to our city.
Can I ask one more, just quick question, Mayor? May I?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Brian, you're ready to come stand up and talk.
Let's see if this is the briefest I ever spoke. Elaine, I believe it was you that asked us to come to present, and I want to thank you for that. I look forward to that partnership, because the Arroyo is so important to our community. For transportation reasons, if I'm going to go for a bike ride, it's so much more calming to not deal with traffic and cars. And it's a quick shot right across the city, and it's really accessible for workers or just for exercise, for mental and physical health. It's really good. The last thing is I brought trail guides. Of course I did. If any of the council members want one, I'll ask permission to approach the bench. But we'll go back to your question. Any members of the public, I'll be in the back with them. Was that the briefest you've heard me talk?
That was lovely, and that was probably the perfect cursor into my question, was my question, which was, and I believe Elaine referenced, that it was Councilmember Williamson and Soika that originally partnered with the parks and had, and started the discussion, et cetera. My question is, is there, are there council members? Is that, is that an ongoing conversation as far as the council members being involved in this discussion with, with parks? Or is it now completely in your baby and you just talk behind the scenes? I guess that's, that's my question.
Yeah, I believe during the development of the plan, it was, you know, we had the committee and folks working on it. Subsequently, given that we have the plan and we've kind of outlined what phases we're doing, we've mostly been able to establish that at the staff level. That being said, if, you know, if a couple of council members or the committee you have and our board wants to get together from time to time, or our board wants to get together and talk about the next phase or planning for that, we can certainly do that. I defer to the city manager on.
Gotcha, and maybe it was just a selfish question, because I'm thinking about that question, do we want to go to Moore Park? Or do we want to go all the way to Corriganville, et cetera? And I'm, I'm thinking, I want to do both. How do I get on that committee to make it all happen? So that was, that was.
Right.
Don't we have a liaison to the Park District?
I thought we did.
Because I'm on that committee.
We do, we do have a liaison, but I think, got to get through Phases Five and Six first before.
That would definitely be the time when we get through the, what I call the access and safety. Once we finish Five and Six, there will be some policy level questions and input we'll need when we're looking at those future decisions.
Mayor, I have two quick questions, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. The first one is, thank you, Brian. I hope this is an updated version. I want to know if this trail guide or if anything on your website shows how you can connect the biking and hiking trails to the Arroyo.
Not necessarily. That is trail specific. So the way that's set up is it identifies the trailhead and the hike. It gives a description of the hike and kind of elevation changes. But that is not a map that identifies that or that book, yeah.
I would ask for that to be a consideration for a future phase. And my second question is, and as you know, I'm a Boy Scout leader and a Girl Scout leader, and all the Scouts love the Arroyo and they use it all the time. So thank you. I would like for us, I know we have a tri-agency committee that is, you know, Parks and Rec, the city and the school board. And, you know, obviously, this is something that impacts all three of those agencies. We have students that are using it to get to school. You know, we're funding it, you're funding it. And so I'd like to know if, you know, we can collaborate more actively, as Councilwoman Littler asked, because, you know, we do have the tourism agency that I believe Mayor Mashburn is on that board, and we want to promote this. We want other people to know what this is, how you can use it. These are things that other cities like Irwindale and Santa Monica, like they all have this kind of, you know, project. And it is the highlight of their city on their website. You know, they talk about the collaboration and, hey, come, come bike here, come hike here. It's beautiful. The pictures that you provided, you know, show how beautiful it is. So I would really ask that we, you know, help promote that, and that would also help with regard to getting funding as well. There's also, you know, COVID funding and, and, you know, greenhouse emission lowering, you know, funding that is available. That might not have been available before, but it is available now. So to consider that as well, and I think the collaboration would only help to highlight this. Thank you, Mayor.
The tourism committee can always do a little better, but they've been reaching out and doing a very good job of identifying the bike trails and the different hiking trails available to anybody that comes and visits Simi Valley, whether it's within the city limits or not. Any others?
Good board? All right, well, we, on behalf of the board and the Park District, we really appreciate your partnership on this. And I think, like I said, and I think we'd all agree, this is an outstanding project for, for the community. It's a long-term project, but we are making a lot of progress, and we will continue to do so. Thank you for having us and being interested, so.
Thank you all for coming.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item Five, Public Statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city clerk, to the City Council. However, they will not be read this evening by the city clerk. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their card was submitted, followed by speakers who are signed on to Zoom to speak for this. Public Statements, Item Five, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Do you have speaker cards, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I do. I received a, like others on the council, an email from Mr. Greg Littler, and it's a very colorful email. But it seems as though at the last council meeting, maybe he misunderstood us or something. So I want to clarify some of the things he brought to everybody's attention, including the newspapers that he sent it to, indicating that we voted for cannabis at the last meeting. And what we voted for, and I'm open to hear from any council member that said anything different, we voted to hear more information about the different inquiries we had received, and we brought it here to the council meeting. We had talked about it, and then it was determined that we should research further to find out where things are. And we did not vote to support or deny it. It was simply to carry it forward so we can learn more and be equipped in today's. I, in particular, asked that we contact cities that have legalized marijuana use and growth and cannabis sales, and find out what their experiences have been, and ask that staff to bring that information back to us. So if then we decided we want to go further, then we could talk about putting it on the ballot. But at this point, it was simply to do what we're supposed to do as council members, and that is educate ourselves. He indicated that I needed to man up, or we all needed to man up. Well, he's called me many, many times. He needs to man up and call me on this so we can discuss it without putting it in the newspaper and have wrong information. So this is available to you. He, in particular, asked that it be available to the public, and so it is. And if anybody wants it, you can request from staff or call the city, a city.
Make a public records request.
Or public, we'll make it easy for you to get a copy. It's no big deal. He wanted you to have it. So with that, we have not voted one way or another. We've voted to gain more information. Got to have a blue card, I'm sorry. You can fill one out, though. Okay, we're ready for the first speaker.
Thank you. Bruce Boyer?
Hi. I'm Bruce Boyer from White Manor. I'm a candidate to the Department of Elections. Think we need a referee so that everybody know we'll have a clean game. What I want to talk to the council, you folks, about tonight, is we've been coming to the council to talk to you about our Second Amendment rights. Want to thank Councilmember Levenos for bringing up our First Amendment. Our Second Amendment is not secondary to the First. All of our rights are inalienable, our right to keep and to bear arms. Well, until 2004, only one state in America actually let us exercise our rights, Vermont. In 2004, and I've given copies of all this to the council, read at your leisure, Alaska decided to reassert its Second Amendment rights. In Alaska, you don't need a permission slip to exercise a Second Amendment right, any more than you need a permission slip to ask, to exercise any aspect of your First Amendment rights. Well, in 2016, we added more states. By January of 2021, 16 states of our United States had become constitutional carry. No permit is required to exercise a Second Amendment right. A man or a woman may freely keep and bear arms in public. They don't need permission slips. Well, how'd we go from there? By January of this year, we had 21 states are now constitutional carry. 21 others shall issue permit. Unless you are a convicted felon, you will be issued a permit to keep and bear arms. Since I addressed this council at the last meeting, we're now at 23 states. Ohio and Alabama have recognized the rights of the citizens to keep and bear arms, their Second Amendment right. Only eight states do not recognize this as a right. One of them is ours. Our California Penal Code provides that a chief of police can issue a concealed carry permit to any resident of the city. That would exclude me. But every resident of this city has a right, I assert, to apply to this city for the chief of police at your direction, that he will issue, that man or woman especially, and as a man with daughters, that's my concern. Not worried about my safety, but I got daughters that are not even five feet tall. They need to have their right to be armed to protect themselves. I'm calling on this city council, hold a public forum. We want to know where you stand. Let's have that debate. Let's have that discussion. I want somebody to stand up and say Ruth Levenos can't be trusted to carry a gun, but she can sit on the city council. I want somebody to stand up and say DeeDee can't be trusted. No, we all have that right. Let's bring our Second Amendment back, and I want to thank the people that showed up again, and we will continue to be here until our rights are restored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evelyn Gaywood?
Hello, Mayor, council members. I'm here to talk about the dispensaries. Did some research. A number of California cities with medical marijuana dispensaries have experienced an increase in crime associated with these dispensaries. Storefront dispensaries have been targets of violent takeover-style armed robberies. Cannabis is on the march. 33 states and the District of Columbia have legalized marijuana. 11 states and the District of Columbia have legalized recreational use of cannabis for adults over 21. And others are considering it. More than 37 million Americans use cannabis each year in one form or another, flowers, concentrates, edibles, and the like. Legalization brings some notable benefits, of course. Among them, state tax revenues get a boost, new jobs get created, the law enforcement can move on to more serious crimes if we didn't have it. But somewhere along the way, public health considerations have been pushed to the sidelines. The Food and Drug Administration ensures the safety of only a handful of cannabis products, mostly those available by prescription. It does not oversee any of the plants, foods, oils, or tinctures sold in the cannabis dispensaries throughout the U.S. This is a problem because the agency with the most expertise for monitoring food and medicals products in terms of their contents and customer safety is not doing so, leaving the job to the state's agencies and lack of experience and technical expertise. Colorado, Oregon, Oregon, and California, and Nevada have had to use public health advisories and recall cannabis after harmful pesticides were found in them due to improper behavior of growers, producers, and testing labs. Emergency departments in states where cannabis use is legal are seeing a growing number of visits involving cannabis, including cases of cannabinoid hypermesis. In other words, it's continuous vomiting related to cannabis use, even among the experienced users. Hospitalizations and emergency department visits, related emergency department visits have increased substantially, especially in states with more liberal policies. In Colorado, hospitalizations among cannabis users doubled after legalization of medical marijuana, and emergency visits doubled after legalization of recreational marijuana, notably for pediatric ingestion and acute intoxication, uncontrolled vomiting, acute psychosis, and burns from the butane hash oil. I don't know if any of you have ever met anybody who smoked marijuana a lot. I did, but I didn't inhale. No, I'm just kidding. These people that I know well, I still know them, but I don't hang with them, they're handicapped. They're not focused. They can't put a sentence together that makes any sense.
Thank you, Evelyn. It's, time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stacy Vanderchef?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the City Council. I'm here today to express my sincerest appreciation to the Rancho Simi Parks and Recreation District, their Board of Directors, and the city of Simi Valley for their efforts to secure. for their efforts to secure grant funds to make improvements to the Arroyo Simi Greenway, particularly the bike path. I would like to thank our Parks and Rec Board for adding improvements and upgrades to the bike path to their list of upcoming high priority projects. Since moving back to Simi Valley, I have regularly used the Arroyo Bike Path. I use it up to three times a week, in fact. I've trained for dozens of half marathons and full marathons on that bike path. I know it very well. And I've also participated in many half marathon races on that bike path. I've also noticed that many of our residents of Simi Valley appreciate the special feature of our town. I've crossed paths with friends walking dogs, riding bikes, and training for their own races. I frequently encounter scout troops, families, and clubs doing bike, group bike rides. Around this time of year, I see familiar faces training for the Los Angeles Marathon. People are very friendly to each other on the bike path. It's a dedicated place to ride, walk, or run, isolated from car traffic. That makes it a very special feature that has a elevated sense of security. The City of Simi Valley's website describes the Arroyo Simi Greenway specific plan as a joint venture between the City of Simi Valley and Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District to develop plans to turn the Arroyo Simi into a focal point and recreational amenity to be enjoyed by Simi Valley's residents for generations to come. I hope that the city council and Parks and Recreation Department continue doing tremendous work in completing the Arroyo Simi Greenway specific plan. Thank you very much.
Julie Bershon?
Good evening. This is my first time up here, so I'm a little nervous. It's pretty ironic for me to be here tonight discussing marijuana in our city. My daughter, as we speak right now, has been suspended from Simi Valley High School. Somebody put some marijuana inside her backpack, and she has been suspended. So I'm an educator of 25 years. I can guarantee you, my daughter is not smoking any marijuana. There are kids in Simi Valley High School right now that are being very dishonest because they have weed in our campuses with our children. It's a problem that it's in our high schools. Being an educator with parents that are already on drugs and drinking, it's a big problem for me. So to bring in here to Simi Valley is a bigger problem for me. Furthermore, I have a brother who is 55 years old. He's 150 pounds overweight, and he's been smoking marijuana since he was 18 years old. He's never held down a job, and he's very difficult to speak with because he's always under the influence. In numerous cases, medical marijuana from dispensaries has been diverted to illegal drug use. The Los Angeles County Police have also reported that selling marijuana to minors in the possession of third parties marijuana, they give you an identification card to minors. It's easy for adults to get it, which means they get it and give it to our children. Please don't bring in here to Simi Valley. So in essence, waiting for society not to work is a health concern. If we're worrying about revenue, we should advocate people working. That is also a revenue. Their income tax is a revenue. Advocating for more revenue for people to receive marijuana is counterproductive. I'm hoping you see it that way. Perhaps when these people need a place to feel better about themselves, they can use the Arroyo. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Suzanne Thewitt?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and City Council and fellow neighbors. I also would like to just discuss and educate my opinion on the effects of marijuana dispensaries on residential housing. So there's an article found in the Forbes website referring to the effects on residential housing in Denver, which the state that recreational marijuana was first legalized in Denver, Colorado. On the residential front, the impact appears to be mixed. The NAR report reveals that in some states marijuana was legal, where marijuana was legal the longest, 27% had seen a decrease in residential property values near dispensaries. And adjusting to the new reality, landlords were adding addendums to leases where recreational marijuana is legalized. Up to 67% of residential property managers have seen lease addendums to restrict smoking on their properties. So we're talking apartments and things. So like the other people mentioned, the house, the health risks also, hospitalizations due to improper behavior of growers, producers, or testing labs, putting in things that shouldn't be in there, increased crime. And not to mention the negative impacts on neighboring land uses, such as traffic noise level, foot traffic, loitering, accidents, and arrests. So just some things to think about before bringing those things to our city. The other thing I wanted to touch on was, should Zoom continue for meetings? I think Zoom served a purpose when we were not allowed to meet in person. However, that ship has sailed, and so should Zoom calls. I realize it's easier and convenient for some, but to show true transparency, we should show up in person. If Zooming continues, I would say there needs to be guidelines. And one would be that you have to be present in the city and a resident of the city to comment on city issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gary Paul? Gary Paul?
Not here? Okay, she's saying he's not there.
Joe Pachowski?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to speak on two, two items. First, I want to, I want to address the action that was taken at the last council meeting regarding marijuana. One of the things, one of the negative things that our city is known for, it's kind of whispered sometimes, but I think we all can acknowledge that it's there, is there's a lot of drug use that goes on in our city. And marijuana, like it or not, is a gateway drug to other drugs. We're seeing kids dying from fentanyl overdoses because they bought something that they didn't know was laced with fentanyl. I've got to believe that use of marijuana leads to the use of other drugs. And I don't quite understand why four of our council members at the last meeting chose to take an action contrary to what the voters of our city stated six years ago. Six years ago, they said no to marijuana. Frankly, if somebody wants to change that, let them go out, let them fund a ballot initiative, and let them pay for the ballot initiative. The city shouldn't, shouldn't be revisiting every six years what the residents have already expressed as their, as their opinion. There's no need for that. The other thing I want to talk about tonight is the continued use of Zoom. I think it's, now, I know for a fa, I know for a fact, at least the last time I checked, there has been one individual who's on the other side of the political spectrum, myself, who has no, who is known for actually being a student at Columbia University. He's been calling in on Zoom. And, and I get that, I know that the mayor doesn't like the fact that anybody from anywhere can call into our city council meetings and express an opinion on what's before the city council. But I think it's become pretty clear from either being here in the council chamber for most of the last two years, or watching on, at home on TV or YouTube or through Zoom, that the people that live in Simi Valley that are commenting via either Zoom or in person are saying that, are stating where they live. And so leave Zoom alone and, and just listen to the people who are saying that they live in Simi Valley. I live in Wood Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Litzter?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for having me today. I don't get out much these days, as you can tell. Seldom here. Just two quick comments on two, two topics. One, the proposed conversation about fines for fireworks. You need to understand that Elaine was born on the Fourth of July. And I don't know how she's going to vote on that concept, but she does like the Fourth of July. The second, I need to, I want to commend Ruth Luvenos's ability to persuade Mike Judge to second her motion to reconsider the pot stores in Simi Valley. I think it was an Obi-Wan Kenobi Jedi mind trick because how could that happen? But earlier today, I sent all of you documents about the history of other cities that have done this, brought in these, these pot stores. And the article I sent you about the Pueblo, Colorado is very telling. It is very telling. And it does not help the city. Then the article from Mother Jones about what happens with, with this marijuana that's smoked all the time and, and the devastation. We don't need this city council to help out the pot community. And in fact, in my email, I suggested increasing the fines for people who don't report. You don't want this. Now, I tell you, I was shocked. Now, Mayor, you made a statement captured in the Acorn saying that things have changed. And you didn't specify what things have changed. Well, I'll tell you what has not changed is the mind, the brain development of youth. The brain develops until age 25. And if you think that you can have a pot store in, that will not filter down to the kids in this community. You're wrong. Now, are the kids in this community getting pots someplace else? Yeah, they are. But are we going to make it easy for them? No. Coming back to what has changed. Well, the one thing that I know that's changed for you, Mayor, is you sold your home. You finally moved to Texas. You're living in an RV, like a lot of other homeless people in Simi Valley. The only difference is that all your tires match and your registration is current. But still, the point here is we need, all of you need, to protect Simi Valley. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that, Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker card. We will check with Zoom.
Yes, we do have two attendees on Zoom that would like to speak. I'm going to be calling Ruep Man, and I'm going to allow you to speak. Please unmute yourself once you get over.
Hello, I think you said my name. Ruep Man, correct? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, Mayor Mashburn, I'm a citizen of the city council. I came here specifically today to talk about keeping Zoom as an option for public statements. I think it's a lot more equitable for people who work, and a lot of people are still working from home. They need to, they'll figure out childcare, attend these meetings. They do tend to run really late sometimes. It's a lot easier to participate from the comfort of your home. I also want to mention, I'm not sure a lot of people know this, but you actually can't require people to answer a question about where they're from. It's against the Brown Act, it's a violation. So you actually can't do that. I also was just inspired by the other topics. I'm not sure what the Second Amendment has to do with Simi Valley. I would say maybe that's a, that's a question for the governor, or maybe it's up by the authorities, or Henry Stern. And as well, legal marijuana dispensaries, they aren't legal. They would just bring economy to Simi. People are already getting marijuana legally in the valley, bring it here. I'm sure other places in mature county as well. And high schoolers that are getting illegal drugs is a completely separate issue from legal dispensaries. That should be addressed by parents and by law enforcement if necessary. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I'm going to be asking Rebecca, bringing you over to speak. And once you come in, please unmute yourself.
Hi, yes, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I'm just, you know, good evening, city council. I am just, you know, here in support of continuing a hybrid model for commentary and participation in city council. I know that, for me, it's really important to participate. I know many of you may not like that, or, you know, whatever. But it is important for accessibility as far as, you know, having the opportunity to speak on something. You know, if you're listening to the meeting, I know that it's available. You know, they, people can watch it on YouTube. People can watch it on, you know, the local stations, local TV. But I really like the, the Zoom option. And it actually got better. So previously, the, the option was that you would email in your request to provide a public statement via Zoom. This was, you know, during the, you know, during the shutdown and just being a lot more restricted to being at home. And, you know, that was, that was, you know, I was having to remember, okay, I need to, by a certain time, email city if I want to, you know, have to make sure I look at the agenda and halftime. And so that was always a little, you know, frantic on Monday to see if I can provide some comment. But then it was changed to a model that made it a lot easier, which is that on the agenda, the Zoom link was already provided. And I thought that that was fantastic. I thought that for me, that was the city moving in a direction of accessibility. And so when we bring up topics, or when I hear council members saying that they don't want to see that participation, I really feel like, you know, it's something minimal that the city is doing to extend accessibility of city government, which is, you know, you guys know, it's sometimes, you know, boring. Sometimes it's, you know, there's a lot of controversial topics and, you know, people get really upset or, and so, you know, it is important to bring people in. And allowing for that hybrid option, that Zoom option, is something important. For example, you know, today, I wouldn't be able to participate if it wasn't, you know, for having the, the Zoom option because I'm currently caretaking, or taking care of someone who is ill. And so for me, that's really important. And, you know, that's just an instance today. But it's just important for us to move forward, make sure we keep that accessibility. And it's a small thing that city government can do. And then just on the topic of, you know, dispensaries, I think that it is the right move to allow input from constituents, from residents in the city. That was the last motion at city council. It was to ask for input. And then, you know, I, I think we should have dispensaries in this city. And then, you know, I, I think we should have dispensaries in this city. I think that we're talking about businesses that exist elsewhere, elsewhere. I've talked to many residents who have said that, yes, they, they purchase weed and they're doing it elsewhere. And they bring it back here. And these are adults. These are responsible, you know, residents and citizens. And so, I do think it's time for us to, number one, open it up to conversation with our neighbors, and then, you know, to move forward.
Excuse me, you're, you're-
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
That is the last of our attendees on Zoom.
Okay. Next up, we're going to have comments regarding the public statements. Based on, I made some comments prior to Mr. Litster getting here and making his comments. I want to respond to his comments, and I want to respond to the other folks here that are concerned that we are somehow endorsing the, the idea of having cannabis delivered here, cannabis stores here, and legalizing it into a retail business here in Simi. That's not accurate. It's absolutely not accurate. It's very unfair, the stuff that Mr. Litster wrote, and then send it to the newspaper. I'd like to tell you what I told them. You said in your letter to man up. Well, I'm telling you, you man up. You call. You're not afraid to call me any other time, but this time, where were you? So at the end of your email, it says, "Redact my personal information." Why is that? Because you won't man up? But anyway, let me move on. That last meeting, we discussed, because a variety of us had said that we've been getting notifications from the public that they want us to look into the marijuana thing again, or the cannabis thing, however you want to call it. I think we have a service to respond to our constituency, whether they are on the same page as me, or anybody on this council or not. And this council, I believe, did the right thing in asking staff to provide a report to us on where this is heading. No different than you're bringing us valuable information tonight, and we're absorbing that information. And somebody's got this way out, they've gotten way out in front, saying that we're endorsing, and we're going to bring marijuana legal sales and what have you into Simi Valley. That decision has, I didn't hear one council member say that that's what they wanted. They wanted to hear a report on what is going on. I specifically said that I know it's been a number of years, you, I think quoted me, Greg, and things change. And guess what? Things do change. And I don't want to be ridiculous and tell you some of the changes that have happened in this world in just a few years. But we have to keep up with these changes, and we have constituents saying, please look into this. Please go this way. And maybe we don't want to, maybe we do, but gosh darn, give us the benefit to at least educate in ourselves before you fly off the handle, write letters to the newspapers, and call the names. So with that, I'd like to real quickly say, I'm extremely opposed to the Zoom calls. Extremely opposed.
I think it's appropriate, Mayor, that you've made your response to the public comments, and I think you should probably be pursuant to the Brown Act.
Okay.
Yeah.
Different subject?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to let the attorney win this one. And I, and I hopefully made it very clear, I'm extremely opposed to the Zoom calls. You going to hit me? Okay, next up.
Mayor, if I, if I may-
Ruth.
Can we make comments as well?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to point out that this is Women's History Month. We made a proclamation just less than a couple of hours ago of Women's History Month. And to hear men coming into this city council chambers and talking about, they're worried about their daughters. If you want daughters to be safe, then you teach others to respect women, especially during Women's History Month. If, if I hear man up one more time up here, if I hear that misogyny one more time, I'm very upset at that. Those are misogynistic messages. We can't sit up here and make a proclamation of Women's History Month, and then say man up back and forth. That's not something that I want to hear up here. That's not something that's appropriate. That's a continuation of misogyny. You want to know why people are turning to drug use, or they're sad or depressed? It's because we keep hearing this misogynistic comments. It's Women's History Month, at the very least during this month. Please, please contain your comments. Please be respectful of 50% of the population of this, in this city, in the state, in this nation, and in this world. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry that Mr. Boyer left, because I did want to address his comments about the Second Amendment specifically. I think it's a good thing that states have constitutional carry. We don't have it in California. I spoke last time when he mentioned this after public comments, and I'll say it again. Our chief of police does have the ability to issue concealed weapons permits to citizens, but right now, as it sits, our sheriff does that job very well, and he does it countywide. I don't know of anybody that's been denied a concealed weapons permit by our sheriff's department for, for a good, for any reason other than the fact that they're a felon, or not supposed to have a weapon in their possession, maybe due to mental illness, maybe due to something else that happened in their past. But as far as I know right now, our sheriff's department does a good job at issuing concealed weapons licenses. To make our police department issue concealed weapons licenses would mean that our chief of police would have to put personnel on that full time, like the sheriff's department does, because people have to be investigated, they have to be checked before the license is issued. So, we do not have, I'll say it again, we do not have the personnel or the resources to do that full time. This is the only reason why our chief of police does not issue these permits. It's not that he's against it, or anything like that. It's a logistical thing. And right now, as it sits in our county, if you want a concealed weapons permit, go to the sheriff's department. I understand that the backlog is about five months. Thanks.
Elaine.
Thank you. That's fine. I'm happy to be called Elaine, too. That's fine. Actually, I wasn't going to comment, but I really want to say, I really appreciate the dialogue and, and comments of so many, on so many topics, and, and just very much appreciate the involvement of our community. I want to make it clear that, that Mr. Litster speaks entirely independent, and that we don't have discourse before. There may be one after, but certainly there wasn't before. The one thing he spoke of absolute truth is, yes, I was born on the Fourth of July. So, that's, those are my comments for this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item Six, the Consent Calendar, and there are three resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent Item Four, Resolution Number 2022-14, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Confirming and Renewing the Proclamation of the Existence of a Local Emergency, and Resolution Number 2022-15, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Confirming the Existence of a Local Emergency, and Authorizing Remote Teleconference Meetings of the Legislative Bodies of the City of Simi Valley Pursuant to Brown Act Provisions. And Consent Item Five, Resolution Number 2022-16, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Approving an Updated Citywide Publicly Available Pay Schedule in accordance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5.
Mayor, if I may request to pull consent item two and three.
Okay. Pull two and three.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay, second.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion in second. Two, I got five.
One, four, and five.
One, four, and five. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, two. Questions on two.
I'm waiting for staff to- Are you ready? Oh, good. So, I'm looking at, I went through the staff report. I really wish this had not been a consent calendar item, because it's so substantive. I really feel like the public needed to hear what's in it. I'm looking at page four, and it talks about how we don't have any colleges or universities, but there are a number of students, of college students in our city. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, they're, they're, and not everyone wants to, or has the ability to live with mom and dad while they go to college. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we still need some form of student housing.
Correct.
Okay, and we have, I assume, residents that go to, not only Moore Park College and C-Sen, which are both adjacent, but we also have an adult ed program, vocational technical program here in Simi Valley as well. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, do we have anything? Like, I know there were SROs that were planned, or are they in this plan?
So, for the purpose of the General Plan Progress Report, we have nothing in our codes or requirements that limit student housing. If the market wants to construct it specifically for students, the zoning code allows it, the development code allows it. It's just the will of the development community that want to build it.
Okay, and I had a question, and I would like for you to clarify. On page five, it talks about the notable changes to the elements include incorporation of the affirmatively furthering fair housing AFFH section. Can you give a little more information about that, because I don't think everyone knows what exactly that is?
Oh, sure. And so, as part of our Housing Element update, this was one of the recent law changes that was adopted through the state of California, that they wanted all cities to incorporate this portion of the, of the government code into their housing element updates. And so, we did do that as part of, you know, the way that it was provided to the state, they gave us a lot of last minute instruction in the middle of the housing element creation. We adopt, you know, we included discussion on that topic, and we sent it back to the state of California. They had some further comments, and we're waiting to see if they will accept our reply. But as far as complying with this portion of the code, it is, was included as part of our Housing Element update. And I don't know if you had anything specific within there that you wanted to discuss?
No, I just want to make sure that, because I know it's, it's going back to the state. We're waiting for a response. So, can we get a report back on that, once we get a response from the state?
Yeah, well, we'll actually be bringing the, those revisions probably back to the city council to kind of summarize what the state asked us to do in their six-page letter, what our responses were, including this topic here about AFFH.
Okay, and can I request of the mayor that, that report not be on the consent item, but that it be a regular agenda item, or do I need to request that at 9B?
We, we were going to put it on the, on a continued business item.
Okay.
And I do want to follow up. The, the city has funded and has contracted for fair housing services for over 30 years. So the comments from the state are, because they have not previously been incorporated into a general plan, so the state now is asking them, or, I'm sorry, housing element, which is a part of the general plan. So the state is now asking for that to be included in the housing element in the general plan. So we've, we've been accomplishing it for the last 30-plus years, but now the state just wants it documented.
Okay, thank you. On page nine, where it says, it talks about open space preservation, it says, "The city shall continue to require development agreements and conservation easements to preserve open space." Can you talk about how that coincides with SOAR? Because we are a SOAR city. Is that, does that support SOAR? Does that-
They're, they both seek to achieve the same goal. SOAR, save our open space and agricultural resources, seeks to encourage cities to build, you know, within their urban footprint, not to expand outward. So we have our sphere of influence boundaries, our curb boundaries, that dictate how far out, let's say, Simi Valley would ever grow. And the same thing here is, it's been adopted, it's, this is always something ongoing with each and every project, as we evaluate it. Sometimes we do get requests to go outside the Simi city limit, like annexation requests, but it's all done with consideration of SOAR if we are ever to, were to consider an application like that. And so, development agreements is a tool the city can use for these types of projects that might be very large in their scale, and, and it's a way for the, the city to kind of have some more control on any particular development project that might be getting into our open space areas.
Okay, thank you. My, I have two more. Thank you for hanging in there with me. The next one is on the Climate Action Plan. I know we had had residents that had come previously and asked for the city to develop a specific climate action plan, and this one is with regard to establishing a cap to reduce or encourage reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. This ironic that we just had the report on the Simi Arroyo, which would be one of the ways that we could help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, does this require us to develop a climate action plan, as residents have requested prior to this?
We, we currently have a climate action plan. It's been in 19-
It's been in place since 2012.
Yes. Okay, I was going to say the end of the year. So 2012, we adopted, the city adopted a climate action plan.
And it says that we are to reduce emissions at least 15% by the year 2020. So did we meet those goals?
I don't think we've gone through and measured that quite yet. We have worked with, we've been working with a consultant to do some benchmarking for the community based upon all of the work that we have done. I'd have to review the documents that we have to see if we have achieved that goal or not.
And then I see that the status under that, it says, "The City of Simi Valley adopted its own climate action plan in 2012," and that we were designed, it was designed to support greenhouse gas emission reduction, targets of 49% by 2035. So, can we get a status update on that? I just don't want all these plans to be buried. I, I would like the public to know that we are working on it, because people have asked repeatedly, do we have a climate action plan?
What I can, what I can say is that each and every time we do a project, we evaluate it in accordance with SEQA, under SEQA, and this is one of the areas that's in, in, every time we do a mitigated declaration, or an EIR, this is an area that gets studied for each and every individual project of such size that warrants it. So, we do always have a mindful eye. We, we sometimes will send our plans to the Air Pollution Control District, et cetera, for their review and concurrence. So that is part of our general plan, part of our development code, and part of our development review process. So I can, I can say that, this is a living, breathing type of document. We do, in each and every project, evaluate this when, when the project warrants it.
And I guess what I'm asking for is, can we get like a, like a bigger picture report? Because I know we look at individual developments, but can we get a, do you understand what I'm saying? A bigger picture, so that we can look at collectively, how, are we, are we towards meeting those goals?
Yeah, we, we can take a look at it and see what the requirements are to, we may have that information, or whether we have to dig a little deeper to determine it.
Kind of, where, where did we start? Where are we now? And where should we be in the future? And are we, are we towards there?
Exactly. Yes.
And then my last question, and if any of these need to be 9B requests, I'm happy to make those. The last question is about the infill. It talks about, "The city shall develop and maintain a citywide database of vacant and underutilized sites to provide information to developers." How do we get that information? Is that on the website, or can a developer just Google? You know, where can I, you know, get land so that I can build SROs in Simi Valley? Like, how do they get that information?
So, that's in our department. Actually, it's, that information is contained in our general plan in our housing element, these underutilized parcels. They're very specifically identified as opportunity areas. So we're identifying to the state, here's the actual land that we're citing for development. And beyond that, we do create, we contain, have databases of that information in our department, if people are interested.
And anyone can access it?
Oh, yeah.
A developer can just say, hey, I want to-
Yeah, we very much try to market these.
I want to build an indoor pool in Simi Valley. Yeah.
You know, again, with the spirit of infill design, infill development, we are trying to encourage these underutilized parcels, or parcels the city council has encouraged developers to do through, you know, with, with the proper zoning and general plan designations to encourage that type of development.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, one more question. This is my last one, I promise. On page 10, it talks about, "The city shall continue to require developers to construct improvements to the public right-of-way, along with their site franchise, to pay fees in lieu of constructing improvements, and constructing other infrastructure improvements." Does that include maintenance?
Well, maintenance is usually taken care of, let's say, through property taxes. And so people, and once the property is developed, the infrastructure is, you know, supposedly contained within that property tax, that maintenance aspect.
And does that go for commercial, or just residential?
Well, you know, I'll develop property, you know, residential, commercial, industrial, pays their property taxes, and that could go to the general fund and be used for maintenance purposes.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because I've had several residents ask about, you know, why is there so much bird poop on the sidewalk here in the city, or there in the city? And then they ask, whose responsibility is it? And so, that, that's why I asked, with regard to this maintaining the, the right-of-way.
Yeah, that's, the trick is, we have so many hundreds of miles of road infrastructure, and streets, and water lines, and pipes to maintain. And so, that's the thing, you know, to constantly pay to maintain it. It's like inheriting a grand mansion. You know, you have to constantly upkeep it. And sometimes the revenue that the city council has to play with- play with allows us only to do an incremental portion each year, each year.
So do we adjust those fees for the developers so that we can keep up with the costs?
Okay, so every project will have to pay when it gets developed, its public infrastructure component along the frontage of the property. And so that's the amount of road that it's going to be improving, curb, gutter, sidewalk, et cetera. The maintenance, again, you know, whatever somebody pays in property tax goes citywide. So any individual, you know, to maintain their portion, that's not how our tax system is set up.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Consent three.
Yes, I had a question on consent item three, mayor. I was just curious. I see that this is for approval, thank you, Mr. Peros, for your answers. I see that this is for approval of a contract with law offices of Kegel Tobin and Truce for Workers Compensation Legal Services. I would like a report on what the costs of those, broken down. So I'd like a breakdown of what those costs are and, you know, which departments they're coming out of. Because as I've stated before, I would like for us to be able to void those costs, if at all possible, because this is taxpayer money that this is paying, that this is being paid with. This comes out of our general fund. Is that correct?
Each fund is responsible for their portion of workers' compensation. So it's not all general fund related.
Okay, so does this, does this cost come out of our insurance then?
This, this cost can be prorated through the rest of, some of the departments. They pay an allocation in the budget, they pay in their, their fair share of the workers' compensation costs.
But the department budgets come out of the general budget?
Not always. Sanitation will pay theirs, water will pay theirs, transit pays theirs. Am I missing? I think that's it.
Police department?
Police is general fund.
Okay, so can, can I, can we just get a report from the, if we're going to pay this much, 200, over $200,000 to these law offices for workers' comp? I just want a breakdown of where those costs are going by department. Is that possible? Not by individual, by department?
I'm not sure what cost you're looking for.
For, for...
Cost of the services?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
And can we, can we make that public?
Yeah, I mean, it would be part of the budget document. How much, you're asking, how much is each fund paying for, of this $200,000?
To each city department, yes.
Sure, yeah, we can come up with that.
So that we can implement policies to hopefully reduce that cost and prevent, prevent that much expense of workers' comp. Does that make sense?
The $200,000 is for the contract for the services. It's not the workers' comp claims.
No, I know.
Okay.
I'm aware of that.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I move to approve?
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm in the queue. I just have a question on this agenda item as well, or on this item, if that's all right, please, mayor?
Yes.
All of us on the dais receives regularly correspondence from constituent Teresa Jordan. And she asked some questions specifically on this item. And I just wanted to actually answer one of them publicly, just so, first of all, I know that we look at what she says and we're concerned and want to be sure it's accurate. And I think she misunderstood something, so I just want to ask our, our, our city attorney to be sure that's clear. She, in her correspondence to us, stated, she, she excerpts from the staff report and in quotes, "No monthly billings here and under will exceed $17,500 without prior written authorization via email acceptable for the rendering of said services." Then she goes on to extrapolate that it would be $17,500 each month and that how excessive that would be. As I understand it, and I just want to be sure this is clear, that that's the, that, that basically, these funds are used as they are needed, that they are itemized according to, for different items. And so that is the maximum they would ever be unless you came to us. But that often it is nothing much smaller. And so her calculation is not accurate. I just want to be sure that that is correct.
That is correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to let Ms. Jordan know that, as I understand, this thing that we're voting on simply allows up to that amount to be used when needed and itemized very carefully as it's used for workers' compensation issues that the city has to deal with.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to make a motion to approve consent items number two and three.
Second.
Motion and second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 7A, Direction to Staff Regarding How Public Statements Will Be Received at Future City Council Meetings. And Samantha Argabide is presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and council members. During the February 14, 2022 meeting, the city council requested that a discussion regarding the hybrid approach to public statements, where members of the public may participate via Zoom or in person, be brought back for consideration. Due to COVID-19, since the November 8, 2021 council meeting, public statements have been received in person and via Zoom. At the time of the writing of the report, seven agencies across Ventura County were meeting remotely and providing for public comments via email and Zoom. However, today, the city of Ventura announced that it will be returning to in-person city council meetings next Monday, March 21. They have not yet released details for public participation. This will bring the total cities meeting in person to five. Prior to today's announcement, one of those allows participation in person and via Zoom, two allow comment in person and email, and one allows for in-person participation only. A table with the findings is provided in your staff report on page two. Staff recommends that the city council provide direction to staff regarding how public statements will be received at future city council meetings. This concludes my report and I'm available for questions.
Okay, GD Kavanaugh, wow.
I got in first, whoa, okay.
You got there first, yeah.
I, I have a question more for the city attorney. In regards to Zoom, currently, we are not requiring them to appear on Zoom. So any name that they input onto their electronic application or device would show up. Can we require, if we were to continue Zoom, can we, could we require them to show their face and be in person? I thought I asked it and was told no, but I wanted to double check. My reasoning is that way we know it's that person.
If, can I make a comment on hers? It's very obvious that there's a large group of people out there that want to make sure they are not identified. And these people are calling from many distances, many states, and as one individual tonight said, some university. That doesn't surprise me at all from what we've heard over the last two years during the COVID.
My, oh, sorry.
And one last thing, it's my understanding that the caller who said we cannot require a name and city, that caller, in my opinion, is correct that...
Right, we've said that before, that we, we can ask, but we can't require it.
Yeah, we can ask, but we do not.
Yeah, my, my thought process was, and people may agree with me or they may not, but we have, when people tend to not be visible, they, I call them keyboard warriors on Facebook type of things, where there are a lot more, they may say things that they wouldn't normally say face to face. And if I have somebody standing here face to face, you know, they're gonna, they're going to state their thoughts and their processes and keep within our, you know, courtesies and guidances and such. And I just feel that the person calling in should also be doing the same thing. To me, it just makes it a fair interaction between the two. Because if, that's just my personal opinion. So that was why I wanted to know, could we require their face to appear?
Well, as I read, as I read AB 361, it's pretty broad and pretty expansive, allowing members of the public to have access. And therefore, legislative body cannot require public comments to be submitted in advance, or that public speakers need to pre-register. That seems to suggest to me that people are going to be able to, they're going to argue that they want to have access, and it's going to be hard to limit it in a way that they can't have access unless they present themselves. So I would, I would recommend against that requirement.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mayor Proten, let's...
I have a question for Samantha. When the chart says that some of these cities have it, require in-person and email, does that mean that the emails are being read into the record? Does it mean that they're just being sent to the council members? Does it mean that they are being put in the minutes? How, what does it mean by in-person and email?
Many of the agendas indicated that individuals could email ahead of time, much like our city council allows for as well.
Because originally, there was a time when we were just email and, and they were read out loud. And I just wondered if that's what these cities are still doing.
I don't believe so. I would have to double check that, but I don't believe so in most cases.
So in essence, would you say right now, we are allowing in-person, in email, and by Zoom? You would say that, that all three is what are, okay?
Yes.
Council member, go ahead, Ms.
I, I, you know, I, I've been to some of these city council meetings. And, you know, I have seen some of the emails that have been read out loud. We don't, you know, read emails aloud. You just made a statement, you know, during item five, where you talked about an email, but you didn't read the email. At one point in time, we were reading the emails when the pandemic first started. But, you know, to me, this seems to be an issue of accessibility in terms of having that. What people want to have input is so that they can be heard. And so, you know, if, if we don't have the information about, you know, which emails are being read, I know for a fact that at least some of these, the emails are read because I've been to those meetings. You know, through VCOG and, and, you know, water, or other issues. But I've, I've attended some of these meetings where some of the email comments are read out loud. So, you know, it's hard to judge, right? When you don't know which, which of the cities that entails. But it seems to me that in line with our mission statement, which is to deliver excellent service to our community by providing a safe and healthy living environment. And I just want to clarify that there are still people that have immune, a lot of people here, a lot of residents in Simi Valley have immune compromised issues. And they don't come because they choose not to come. They come because, you know, there are still people dying of COVID. They, they have, I mean, even before the pandemic, they had immune compromised issues that prevented them from participating in our local government. There are people that have cancer here, you know, that if they're exposed to a cold, you know, that, that might be, you know, the end. So we have people here that have those kinds of health issues. The other part of our mission statement as a city is to provide responsive customer service and an atmosphere that encourages community involvement through a local government that is accessible and accountable to its citizens. I have to tell you, I, like I said, I've been to, I've always been active in civic engagement for over 20 years as a teacher, as an individual, as a mother. And I really like how we do public comments here. I like that everyone has, you know, three minutes, that everyone can speak, that it's not a debate back and forth, that we each have the opportunity, city council members to respond. And, you know, to that end, I think, you know, you know, Mr. Pachowski was able to speak via Zoom, as well as a number of other residents who, for whatever reason, could not make it here. They had, you know, work responsibilities. We have a lot of three-generation households here who take care of parents, take care of kids, and they can't make it here. I'm also, and I have a question for, there is a question in here. It, would this be, you can still ask via Zoom if someone lives in the city, but they don't have to respond. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that would allay the fears of, because it's, it's the same in person, right? There's no difference. If they're here in person, if they're on Zoom, you can ask and they don't have to respond. Is that correct?
It cannot be required.
Right, so whether they're here face to face, or whether they're on Zoom, or sending an email, they can send, they can send emails anonymously as well. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah. We wouldn't have a way to police that.
Yeah, so, you know, we can't, we can't police, shall we say, who, you know, makes public comments, whether it's in person, via Zoom, or via email. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and is there anything to prevent someone who comes here in person from lying about who they are or lying about where they live? Do we check IDs?
There's nothing that prevents them from doing that.
Right, so there's nothing to prevent someone who comes in person from lying about who they are or where they live. Right. And, you know, the other thing is, we don't just want people who live here. There are people who work here, who do business here, who don't live here, who also are stakeholders, really important stakeholders in our community. And I would hate to take their voice away, especially our business owners, you know, upon whom we rely for financial support in the city. So, you know, I just want to remind us all of what our mission statement is here in the city. And thank you for answering the question, Samantha, because I think that's really important in terms of, you know, offering this. If, if this council were to decide against providing this excellent service to our community and against the Zoom meetings, the Zoom comments, what would that mean for accessibility of people who are in wheelchairs or who don't have transportation? Would they be able to come here physically? Or would that privilege of participating and that encouragement of community involvement be taken away?
Certainly, anyone would still be able to email the city council with any thoughts or comments they have on any of the city council agenda items.
But those comments, as it stands right now, would not be read aloud?
That is correct.
Okay, and if we decided, if this council decided to get rid of that accessibility and again, go and, go against our missions, our city mission statement, to provide accessibility to our residents, then would we, as individual council members, be able to read those email comments aloud?
I would defer to the city attorney.
Well, I just want to clarify. I think the city is doing all that it can to provide accessibility. And so if, if the city manager wishes to have the city clerk read an email in whole, he can.
It's really, it's really a policy of the city council if they want emails read. We do, prior to COVID, and even post-COVID, people can always email the council on their comments prior to council meeting. When the city clerics receives public statements via email, we're distributing them to the city council by, let's see, 4:30? Four now, four o'clock. So the council is receiving the emails that we received prior to four o'clock, which is even better than we were prior to COVID happening. If the city council would like emails read, we certainly can do that if, if that's a prerogative of the council.
Isn't, let me ask another question and whoever wants to answer. Isn't it, doesn't it require more presence to be on Zoom versus an email? Because you can send an email two, three days in advance. But if you're on Zoom, you have to be live on Zoom. Is that correct?
You do have to be live on Zoom, that's correct.
So it would require more presence to be on Zoom than to send an email? Because you'd have to be present during that part of the city council, you'd have to follow the city council meeting, right? And then know exactly when we're going to have public comments, which changes, right? The time changes every meeting. So you'd have to be present from the beginning to whatever part you were going to make that Zoom comment, whether it's a public hearing, whether it's for item two, or item five, or a public hearing, or new business. You'd have to be present throughout the meeting via Zoom. Whereas with an email, you could just send an email at any time.
That's correct.
So Zoom is requiring more presence and more engagement from those who are making public comments?
They have to be present, right?
Okay, can we move on to another council member for comments?
Okay, thank you, mayor. I reserve the right to make more comments. Thank you.
Council member, Judge.
I would like to, I would like to ask a question, if I could.
Okay.
My, my question, I'm sorry, is I know that we addressed this issue just a few months ago, whenever it was recently. And I know there was a vote at that time. At that time, did we institute a sunset clause that basically said the Zoom would end when the state of emergency ended?
We did not.
Can we make that part of a motion this evening, for instance? If we decided to say, okay, we'll allow Zoom because there are people who are concerned because of immunocompromis, compromise, for instance, the one argument that I, maybe resonated with me. If, if we say that is the case and we're, and in our, in our consent calendar, we just approved a continued state of emergency, which disappears the moment the governor says it's gone, can we also say tonight, we will allow Zoom, we will strongly encourage that they physically show themselves? We cannot require, but, but would strongly encourage if they have the capability, that is preferred method, but that once that this Zoom option will, will sunset the moment the state of emergency disappears?
No.
So that, that could be...
We could say that, but I think, from my standpoint, my argument is, we're opening it up to an unknown group of people that even someone on this dais could send 100 bullet points to them, to 100 different people that belong to, say, some fraternal organization that they belong to, and have them call in and just go down. We have no control over that, none. We, we didn't have, I think it says on the agenda, that if you have to have special arrangements based on some kind of physical disability... that if you have to have special arrangements based on some kind of physical disabilities, that we will attempt to make the arrangements for them. I don't know what that means. I'm not going to sit here and tell you I know who's going to push the wheelchair and I know this, and I, I know they have a broken leg or they have a broken head or a broken this. You can't answer every question in the book. I do know that we make every effort to get everybody in there. The comments about our community, that's specifically it. It's basically, we are working for our community, not for Phoenix, Arizona, Tucson, Arizona, and all these places we get calls from, Columbia University, wherever that is. I mean, it's just, why aren't we protecting our own? Why aren't we building the quality, disciplined facility and council that we've had previously? And open the door to the, for lack of better terms, to the fraud of campaigning when you have Zoom. And here's a perfect opportunity to say, we're looking at our resident, we see them, they're speaking to us. They didn't get their bullet points from somebody, maybe from this dais. They're speaking from the heart, and that's what we need. That's who we represent. So I, I, you know, I, I know you, you want to always bend, oh, just a little more, just a little more. I don't think we need to do that. We need to take control. And that control is to go back to the way we were previously. Look at when we read, when we had the clerk reading the emails. You and I both know very clearly, stacks of emails, all written by the same person, changed the name and a couple of little changes. We're going to sit through that? The other thing, if we're going to open up to Zoom, if this council wants to vote to Zoom, I want to start opening up. Why are we working all night? Let's do this on Wednesday afternoon, because everybody can be here, you know? And then we'll have the argument, well, we can't do it on Wednesday afternoon because time changes in New York. Those people want to be up, you know, something like that. We gotta go back to controlling our own facilities and our own community.
Mayor, I'd like to respond to you, if I may.
Sure, go right ahead.
Thank you. First of all, we have had, you know, I know you call them outsiders, and that is a, a coded word, by the way. But there are people that don't live in the city that have come here for various meetings, including a meeting on SB 54, where there were hundreds of people here. So we cannot limit people from outside the city from coming here, like I said, business owners. If we have college students that are, if we have Simi Valley student graduates who are at Columbia University, hurrah to them. What pride for us to have Simi Valley graduates at Columbia University, such a prestigious university. And if they want to continue to partake in being involved in their local government, I say wonderful. Again, that is part of our mission statement, to provide excellent service to our community. If they want to be involved from 3,000 miles away so that when they come back here, they know what's happening in their community, when they come back for spring break, or when they come back for the summer, when they come back after graduation, wonderful. That's what our mission statement is. It is to encourage community involvement through a local government that is accessible, efficient, and accountable. So your argument that, you know, we want to control people that are coming here, the more people that want to come, the better. Look, we've got lots of seats here. We have lots of ability to, to have people come and speak via Zoom. There is no lack of transparency on Zoom, any less than there is here in person. And that's why I asked those questions of Ms. Argabright. Thank you very much for answering those.
Okay, well, I appreciate the rebuttal, but I don't agree with you at all. DeeDee Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind our community members and those that want to participate. We always welcome them, and we do have various ways. They can email at any point in time. They can email according to the, just for the city council meetings. They can email each of us individually or collectively. It's right on our website. I get emails all the time. I'm going to a student's event tomorrow night because he emailed me, or she emailed me, excuse me. So we, that's another way to do it. You can also call the city manager's office at any time and ask one of us to return your call. My cell phone is on my Facebook page. My cell phone number has been out there since day one when I've been on the council. So there are a lot of ways for everyone to get ahold of us. I get phone calls from people and say, hey, I have a question about this. I get emails, a question about that. We all do. I see some of them that are to all of us. So I, I do feel that we have, we are very open to the community and that there are multiple ways for anyone to access us. I've met people, I meet them somewhere. They want to talk about an event or they want to show me something. You know, that's part of our job. And so I think each and every one of us is willing to do that. So I do feel that we have very good accessibility and I'm proud of that for our community members. So thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to maintain the hybrid approach to public statements so that we align with our mission statement, to provide excellent service to our community.
I think in fairness to Councilmember Judge, he was going to make a motion and we shut him off. So I'll let him, if he would like to make a motion first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but according to our rules of order, she's already made the motion, so.
There was no second.
She hasn't received a second yet.
I'm sorry?
She's already made a motion on air.
She's made?
He's going with her motion.
Oh, you're going with her motion?
No, I'm not. I'm saying she has made a motion. It has not been seconded yet.
Oh, okay, then we'll leave it at that. Thanks. Okay, so we have a motion. Would you repeat your motion?
Yes, the motion is to maintain the hybrid approach to public statements to align with our mission statement.
And I'm not going to second that, but I would only do so if there was a sunset clause with a state of emergency, which is not what she's stated, so I'm not seconding it.
You don't have to clarify here.
The motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, I would, I would ask the mayor that if we are going to vote on...
I believe it was my turn to speak.
Yes, I'm just going to ask for an amendment to your motion.
Well, I haven't made a motion yet.
Oh, well, okay. Wait for your motion, then I'll ask for an amendment.
Wait a minute, we have a motion.
It didn't get a second.
I do not have a second.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have no second. I haven't heard a second, so.
The motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay. Now, Mike Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Government, government participation is a right, and it is also a duty of every citizen in the United States, every citizen of this city. Do not ever, ever think that it is a privilege, because it is not. It is your duty and it is your right to participate in this government, and you should do it in person. So I would like to motion that we return to in-person public statements only at city council meetings.
I'd like to amend the motion that if we return to in-person public statements, that emailed statements be read aloud with a limit of three minutes per emailed statement.
My motion never got a second, so I don't know what she's doing.
Okay, you've got a second?
I was seconding Mike's emotion, Mike's motion.
We have a, a motion and a second, and we'll call for the vote.
The motion passes with Councilmember Lovren's voting no. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 8A, consideration of enforcement options of fireworks use and instituting civil fines for use of fireworks. And Linda Swan is here to present this item.
Can I interrupt you?
I apologize.
I think it's...
Mara Maltz.
We're a little bit long so far, and this is going to be a long discussion. And so let's take a 10-minute break. Okay, call the meeting back to order, and we will thank you for waiting, Mrs. Swan. And we're ready for your report.
Okay. All right, one second here. Well, good evening, Mayor Mashburn and City Council. This evening, I'd like to... ...related to enforcement options of fireworks use, including the use of civil fines to deter firework activity. Anna Bled, and a early happy birthday to you. Sure will.
Whoop, whoop, there's more.
Okay, California law divides fireworks into two general categories, safe and sane and dangerous fireworks. Safe and sane fireworks can include small items such as fountain spinners, snap caps, and must display a State of California State Fire Marshal Registered Fireworks Seal, which... are not dangerous fireworks. Safe and sane fireworks are not explosive, they're not airily launched, and are tested and approved by the Office of the California State Fire Marshal. Additionally, the State Fire Marshal puts a list on its website of fireworks that meet the safe and sane definition. Safe and sane fireworks may be sold, purchased, and used by the general public. However, only licensed retailers can sell them and do so only from June 28th to July 6th each year. However, party poppers and snap caps are exempt from this rule and are sold year-round due to their popularity at children's parties, weddings, and other events. Now, dangerous fireworks include firecrackers, sky and bottle rockets, sparklers larger than 10 inches in length or 1/4 inch in diameter. These fireworks are always illegal except for use by someone with a special pyrotechnic operators license who is trained in the use of such fireworks. Now, most violations of California fireworks regulations are misdemeanors. Under the California Health and Safety Code, firework penalties can include up to one year in county jail and/or a fine up to $1,000 per code sections 12671 and 12700. Possession of 100 pounds or more, including packaging of dangerous fireworks, however, can be charged as a felony. Punishment for felony fireworks violation per code section 12700 can include up to three years in the California State Prison and fines as high as $50,000. These violations are all criminal in nature, they are not civil penalties. So although California strictly prohibits the discharge, possession, or sale of fireworks without a license or permit, cities may adopt their own regulations on fireworks violations, which can include costly civil penalties. Many jurisdictions have adopted civil penalties as a means to further deter firework activity. However, police officers and firefighters often have difficulties finding the precise location where fireworks are being ignited, as many are ignited in backyards and by individuals that leave the location prior to the police or fires department arrival. Civil penalties adopted by municipalities in regards to both safe and sane and dangerous firework activity are separate and distinct from the state's Health and Safety Code fireworks penalties. A social host ordinance expands liability to the social host. That could be the property owner, the tenant, or the person holding the gathering where fireworks are used and are typically subject to a civil fine. Some jurisdictions through its social host ordinance will hold the property owner liable for emergency response costs resulting from the use of fireworks and are responsible for the sale, use, and or possession of fireworks on their property by anyone on their property, regardless of the person's intent, their knowledge, and or negligence. So staff analyzed several area cities, and I'm referencing a few, that were identified in the staff report regarding civil penalties for both legal and illegal fireworks. Santa Clarita in the Los Angeles area does not allow safe and sane fireworks and has incorporated a civil fine for first and subsequent offenses. Santa Clarita has also adopted a social host ordinance. So in the Orange County area, Anaheim does allow safe and sane fireworks, but has adopted civil fines for both illegal and safe and sane activity. They also prohibit discharge in the hillside areas of the city. So, safe and sane is not allowed in cities served by Ventura County Fire Department. The cities of Fillmore, Ventura, and Oxnard have their own fire departments and are not served by Ventura County Fire. Ventura, Oxnard, and Port Wayne Amy have administrative fines for safe and sane fireworks. In addition, Oxnard and Ventura have adopted a social host ordinance. So these fines vary and range from $132 up to $1,000 for safe and sane offenses. Possession or use of any type of fireworks in the remaining cities in Ventura County could face fines up to $1,000 or more if a felony, and up to one year of jail time or more if a felony. So police in these cities, including Simi Valley, can write citations based upon fines identified in California's Health and Safety Code fireworks penalties, sections 1267 and 12700. So provided here is a map identifying the actual location where calls originated from reporting firework activity. During the period of June 28th to July 5th, 2021, the Simi Valley Police Department received 361 calls for service regarding firework activity. No citations were issued, as many of PD staff were providing services at the city's Public Fireworks Show or were responding to other non-emergency and emergency calls within the city. Fire did not respond to any fires related to fireworks in the last two years, except for one incident in June 2020. And the reporting party, who was located at the town center when making the call, indicated that two kids were playing with fireworks at a location a mile away. When fire arrived, there was no one at the scene. The specific task of catching individuals in the act of using or igniting fireworks is the challenge. The city does have a fireworks hotline, so that residents can call ahead of time and report incidents. So this is a heat map, which shows calls related to firework complaints. The map shows higher concentration of calls south of Cochran, east of Yosemite, and in the Bridle Path area, south of Royal, and east of First. As part of past enforcement, the Simi Valley Police Department did cite misdemeanor violators for section 1267 of the Health and Safety Code for dangerous fireworks, those that actually leave the ground. The department also cited the California Fire Code and infraction for smaller amounts of dangerous fireworks, as well as igniting safe and sane fireworks. Ultimately, it becomes a question of deployment, as the complaints are numerous and the risk of damage or wildfire may be low based on locations, activity on the valley floor, as opposed to hillside areas. If it takes approximately 20 to 30 minutes to issue a citation for firework use, it is likely a single police officer during their shift may issue less than 10 citations. So looking ahead to the 2022 Independence Day holiday, the police department is currently planning to utilize undercover operations in an effort to catch people using fireworks. The city manager's communications team can partner in messaging campaign educating the residents of the city's prohibition of fireworks in an effort to deter firework activity. So should the city council want to pursue instituting the use of civil penalties, as identified in this report, staff can return with a proposed fireworks ordinance for city council's consideration. This concludes my presentation. In the audience this evening is Battalion Chief Jeff Pike from Ventura County Fire Department. Should the city council want additional information from the fire department, along with our own Chief Livingstone? Thank you.
Elaine Litzler.
Thank you, Ms. Swan, appreciate your report. I actually have just a couple of questions found on page five of the report, just so I understand better what it means. First paragraph of the last sentence, it says, "The city does have a fireworks hotline, so that residents can call ahead of time and report incidents." What does that mean, "call ahead of time"? Before the fireworks have actually been... In other words, they see someone carrying fireworks and they're concerned? What does that mean?
Well, yeah, it could be that. A lot of time fireworks activity occurs before the Fourth of July. City manager's office did get a lot of calls, like on this, I think it was the second or the third. So I believe the intent of that is that if you see someone with fireworks or someone is igniting fireworks even prior to the Fourth of July, you can actually call the hotline.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to understand that. Fourth paragraph says, and you referenced this, but I want to understand what it means. You said that in 2022, the police department is currently planning to utilize undercover operations in an effort. And I guess, I don't want to give away the police's secrets, so I understand undercover means you don't tell everybody, but what does, what, I mean, what does undercover mean? I guess, in a general sense?
They're gonna have sparklers all over themselves.
Dark glasses, and they're carrying an igniter with them.
Yeah, without giving away any secrets, basically, because you have to observe somebody igniting the firework before you can issue a citation, we would utilize officers to go out and make those observations that wouldn't readily be identified as officers. And then they would report that back to enforcement teams that would come in and then be able to identify the person. Because as you can imagine, when there's fireworks going off, it could be from multiple sources. And so when a black and white drives down the street, everybody scatters, and you can't testify in court that you actually saw a particular person igniting a firework. So in the past, what we've done is we've set up operations like this with staffing permitting, where we go out and we'll target some of these areas where there are more calls. We'll also respond to the fireworks hotline as a way of intervening beforehand, so we'll send officers out to those locations, knock on the door, because a lot of it's anonymous, and just, you know, reiterate the fire code and the things like that. So, you know, and if we get a number of complaints on the hotline before Fourth of July, we can, you know, set up our operations to target those areas where we've had problems in the past.
Gotcha. And if I understand how the code or what your tools are right now, if it is one of these dangerous, let's, we've got safe and sane, then we have the dangerous category. If it is a dangerous category, there absolutely are criminal penalties that, I mean, I guess what I'm really asking is what are the penalties that you have right now in your toolbox? Or you issue the ticket or a fine, or what is the consequence?
So normally, they get issued a citation depending on what the type of firework is. So if they are the fireworks that leave the ground, that are not safe and sane, there are, it could be a misdemeanor and there's a fine that's associated with that. They're not arrested and booked for it, they're cited and released. For the safe and sane fireworks, which are illegal here in Simi Valley, they would get an infraction citation. Again, it would carry a penalty that would be a fine that would go with that. The officers would then seize the fireworks, and normally what we have, when we do these operations, we coordinate with the Ventura County Bomb Squad, because as you can imagine, just transporting these in a police car is dangerous. And so they bring a trailer into the parking lot of the police department, and then those fireworks are disposed of in that trailer, and then they take them, you know, out and destroy them, because we can't have them inside the building, so.
Gotcha. And so you mentioned infraction for safe and sane versus misdemeanor for, et cetera, and that there are fines associated with that. In the report that Ms. Swan just gave, she gave, for instance, Ventura County had a much smaller amount for safe and sane than somewhere else. Do we have in our code, or how are those fines set, I guess? Do we have anything that specifies that, or is that something that...
We have nothing in our code. We only rely upon the California Health and Safety Code.
So is there, in the California Health and Safety Code, is there a set rate for infractions?
There's not, and it's just basically the judge decides that at the time that they go to court. There's a range generally. And so, you know, I don't know what happens with the infractions necessarily, but if it's a first offense, you know, there might be a bail schedule that the judge looks at at the time and says, you know, okay, you know, just like with a traffic ticket, there are no necessarily set fines, there's usually a schedule the judge has to go for, to work from, and so I think that's the same when it comes to the fireworks.
Thank you.
I could actually answer that question, because I go to court quite a bit. The court does have a schedule, a set schedule on infractions, and there is fines that are associated, and there are penalty assessments. So the court in its discretion can issue a fine of $100, but that could come out to about $350, $371, when you add all the penalties and assessments to it.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Louvenos.
Thank you, I'm not sure who to ask these questions of, so Chief, you might have to come back up here. I'm not sure if it's for you, or you're gonna get your steps in today. Make sure your watch is on. Okay, and I'm not sure if it's for the city attorney or for the chief, so I have several questions. What legal standard in the ordinance would make it easier for you to enforce the banning of fireworks?
What particular standard in the ordinance?
Yeah, because I'm very concerned that, you know, staff report states that there were 361 calls for illegal fireworks and zero citations issued. And, you know, personally, when I've called, I live in one of those red zone areas.
Right.
And I have a lot of seniors, veterans, teachers, law enforcement, former law enforcement officers, who are very traumatized by the sound of, understandably, by loud sounds. And it's year-round. It's all, it's not just during, you know, Fourth of July, it's all year-long, to the point where so many of our pet stores are selling all these CBD products to calm dogs, and that's why we also have residents that are purchasing CBD products, because it's the only thing that calms them down. So my question is, for, I don't know who can answer this, what needs to happen? You said you have to catch them in the act, the police officer has to catch them in the act, so a police officer would have to be in front of them while, as they're lighting the firework, and then you could bust them?
Correct, yeah, it has, the citation is for igniting an illegal firework, so we would have to catch them in the act of doing that, which is what makes it more labor-intensive.
So is that, is that what the other Sydney ordinances require as well?
You have to catch them, you have to catch them in the act, unless they're, with a social host ordinance, I would say there's a little different protocol. I don't, based on my research, you could submit a video to the police department, then there would be an investigation, and how it proceeds from there, I'm not sure.
So generally, if an officer is gonna issue a citation for a misdemeanor, the penal code requires that the officer observe the actual violation, because there's two requirements, requirements, the mens rea and the actus rea. Some other jurisdictions have developed a social host ordinance, and that can be done by way of what they call, you know, a strict liability crime, where you don't have to prove the mens rea or the actus rea. You just basically have to be able to prove up that there was a firework, for example, that came from a particular residence, and you can issue a citation to that particular resident-owner, the responsible party. So the answer to your question is, the lower standard would actually be the strict liability offense, but we don't have that on the books right now, as it stands right now.
Okay, and because I don't want to overburden the police department, I understand that, but even 10 citations, and I understand how much time that would take, but even 10 citations would be better than zero, because our residents are understandably upset that this continues to happen, and there's, it's seemingly no enforcement, so it's like, you know...
The problem, the problem is, and I understand that, you know, the problem is, is that where, you know, at what point do you draw the line? And, you know, just in terms of what else we responded to that night, you know, we had calls for service that included a baby not breathing, there were three overdoses, one death, you know, I can go down the list. And so, you know, my job is to, you know, make sure we're doing overall public safety, and so we have a lot of resources, you know, committed to the fireworks show, because it was the first time we'd had it in two years. And then that left me with nine officers to patrol the entire city, 47 and a half square miles, and time between 2:00 in the afternoon and 9:00 at night, and then there were some additional officers that came on. But again, you know, it's that prioritizing, you know, if we can catch them in the act, the officers have no problem writing the citation, but, you know, going out and responding to other calls, some of these calls, you know, take two officers, that takes two officers off the street. So it really is about the prioritizing of it, and that's why I think in the staff report, you know, what we've done in the past is, you know, utilizing these undercover operations, it makes it much easier to catch the violators, and it also frees up the resources for other officers to respond to the regular routine calls for service that are elevated that night anyway.
I just want to clarify, Chief, that we don't actually have a quota system or anything like that.
That's correct, no.
So, again, my concern is not to burden the police department more, that's why we're here discussing this ordinance, that if we do a strict liability, it would be easier. I also want to discourage, you know, residents from going out and investigating, because, you know, I have neighbors that have said, "I called, they told me they want to know exactly the address, and so I got in my car and I drove around, and I found the address where the guy was there with the fireworks, and, you know, I took video." Is that something that you want residents to do?
You know, not, no, because the basic thing is, is that, you know, that's our job to go out there and investigate it, and the problem with that is, is the potential for confrontations, and we want to avoid that at all costs. It does mean sometimes that we're not gonna be able to prove some of the allegations, but I would rather be in that situation than have to go out there because of a dispute happening and leading to some kind of act of violence. So I would, I would never recommend anybody confront somebody on, at a time like that.
Yeah, and I want to make it clear, I'm not asking for quota, I'm just, and this is not just the Fourth of July, like, I stated, it happens all year-long. And I've heard from residents in Bridle Path, I've heard from residents on the east side of Simi Valley, that they're just sick of the fire, I mean, it's in September, in October, in February, in August, like, you know, way before, way after Fourth of July, it's a year-round occurrence.
Right. And we do, you know, we also provide training for the officers. We have a system of training bulletins that we put out, and every year, you know, in anticipation of Fourth of July, we reissue those training bulletins, so that all of our officers get them, and it lists what the proper violations are, what the requirements are. So it's something that they talk about in the roll call, and, you know, it's something that's, you know, it's not that we just ignore it, you know, it's just, again, a management of resources issue.
So, and I understand you said, you know, the night of Fourth of July, but I'm talking about the rest of the year.
Right, and we do respond to those calls the rest of the year. I, we don't respond to a lot of them, I mean, you know, I think more... I mean, you know, I think more of our calls are concentrated near and around Fourth of July. So, you know, it's unusual to get those calls. And I'm not saying that we, that there aren't, people aren't using them, but it's, it's not something that raises our calls for service a lot over the year. It's usually, you know, starting sometime around the end of June, actually maybe mid-June through July that we start to get them. And so normally what we do is we activate the fireworks hotline, usually probably two to three weeks before Fourth of July, so that people can call up anonymously and say, hey, I know the residents at this location, I saw them buying fireworks. We get calls like that. And then what we do is we'll go out and knock on the door. Obviously, we have to follow the Fourth Amendment. We can't just take that information and accuse them. But what we usually do is we hand out a leaflet, comes basically saying that these are dangerous. It lists the violations that are on there. And we tell them, if you're caught, you know, igniting fireworks, that you will face these penalties. So there's that aspect of trying to educate people beforehand so that it doesn't have to come to enforcement. But, but it's usually about three, three weeks to four weeks before Fourth of July that we notice, or at least from my perspective, that I notice an uptick in the calls and monitoring the radio. So.
So how, how many citations have been issued for fireworks?
None that I know of this year. But in the past, yeah, we've, we've had a Fourth of July where we issued 10 citations. And we've had other nights where we, we've issued, you know, 23 citations. I used to be the commander or the manager overseeing the unit that did that. And that was one of our, our jobs is to put officers out there to make these observations. And, you know, some years we would do more, other years we would do a lot less. It just depends on the circumstances.
So you're saying there, in past years, there's been 10 citations or 23 citations, but only on the Fourth of July?
Usually only on the Fourth of, Fourth of July. But there are other incidents where we have issued citations that are not on the Fourth of July. I just can't give you the, the fact, the numbers right now, but definitely we have. But it's not something that's that common. Like I said, we don't get a lot of calls to our dispatch center complaining about fireworks other than within that one month period before the Fourth of July.
Well, I can tell you right now that, you know, some of my neighbors have said, I don't bother calling anymore because they don't come. Or there's no citation issued. And I can't say, I can't say that that's true or not because I don't know.
Right. Well, I mean, like I said, I, I, I'm not doubting that, but I can't do anything about people that don't call. I mean, we have to have the opportunity to respond to it, to intervene.
So, you know, I, this, like I said, there's been many residents, I happen to live in that area. Like I said, I know there's a lot of seniors, a lot of veterans, and this is an issue. So I, I want to give someone else opportunities to talk, but I would like to make a motion eventually.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know to direct this to the chief or the city attorney. Probably the city attorney would help. I mean, he'd probably be able to answer it. Do we already have the ability to say there is an arrest? The police department goes out and makes an arrest for fireworks and they, and they find a, you know, a decent sized stash, maybe, you know, 25, 50 pounds, and the chief is forced to call out the Ventura County Bomb Squad? Do we already have the ability to get restitution from that suspect for the use of that police equipment?
Yes, potentially, yes. For emergency response services, yes.
Thank you. Is your burden of proof any different with a civil ordinance or the state ordinance that already exists? And I believe is strong enough.
Can you repeat the question again?
If you have a civil violation, is your burden of proof any different than what it would be for us, for the state to prove the same thing?
For the criminal violation, be beyond a reasonable doubt. For a civil violation, it would be preponderance of the evidence.
Okay. So let me ask it more specifically then. If the police department was to get to a location and find evidence of fireworks being used, could you, could you use the civil remedy to fix, to find the people that have the evidence of fireworks, even though no fuse was seen being lit?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got, I think, two questions for you. One is, back when I, probably hung with you doing it. But one of the difficulties we had is when we would go and, and make contact with somebody that was violating and they had all these fireworks, we were required from the fire department, maybe Jeff can tell us if it still is. We were required to list everything as evidence, each item. And so when you're talking time, you know, 10 tickets a night, one officer, I don't see it at all. That's, that's not, in my opinion, a possibility. And then the other issue that we have is the, when you drive down the street, mom and paw kettle are out in the middle of the street with their kids and that, and they're lighting them off. How, you don't know which house it's attached to.
That's, that's always a difficult, again, making the identification of where it's, where it's coming from. So.
And then the last question is, is the DA involved in this at all? So we, we get all these citations hypothetically. Is the DA going to file on any of them?
That's a, I mean, that's a question for the DA, I guess. I mean, you know, we, we, well, I mean, you know, one of the things I always stress to the officers is it doesn't matter what the DA does. We have to take, you know, we have to do what the right thing is to do. You know, with the infractions, they're direct file. So it's not, it doesn't even really involve the DA. They go right to the courthouse. I think for the misdemeanors, I recall a couple of years ago, one of our officers had made a traffic stop and there was a truck and literally a whole bed of the truck was full of these, you know, mortars and things like that that were used, you know, for the, almost like professional grade fireworks. We had to call the bomb squad out and the DA did file on that, on that case. So on the bigger ones, I think so. But on the smaller, safe and sane ones, those are direct filed and they're handled through the court. So, yeah, definitely.
Okay. That's, that was the end of my questions. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to express my opinion. I, I know where it's hard to catch them. I've been at those parties and I've been not at those parties. But it's also a, the way I look at it is it's a health and safety issue for our entire community. Those with animals, people with animals are just really go nuts. And I know the department is doing what they can. I'm looking at the, I would like to see an ordinance, I think, basically based on the Oxnard City thing, because it's used as more of a deterrent, hopefully, than anything else. They have that social host, you know, and, and to me, that might make somebody think twice. It might not. But if we don't catch them, we don't catch them. But if we do, or they think they can get caught, it might just be a little bit of a deterrent. It might also give the officers a little bit more oomph, you know, thinking, hey, I, at least we're going to get something or something's going to be done about this. So that's just my opinion. I just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. You've got a monumental task because you and I both know that when you, I don't know what the magic hour is, the whole place lights up. And I, I would like to ask the fire chief, the, I know you have a special, special unit of investigators for significant fires. How many significant fires caused by safe and sane fireworks are you aware of?
That I'm aware of, none. I mean, specifically for the city of Simi Valley in the last couple of years, definitely none.
Okay. So they're not the problem. It's the dangerous ones would be?
Yeah, absolutely. Any aerial fireworks, anything that explodes would definitely be more cause for damage or potential for fire, for sure.
So would I be safe and sane, the focus of those that are out patrolling would be more helpful fire wise? Now, I hear so much now about we're going to be obviously taking care of animals too. But just strictly from the fire standpoint, am I correct in saying that the dangerous fireworks that you see are considerably more important than the safe and sane?
Yeah, absolutely. If we're looking to prioritize where we're going to put our resources, our energy, educating the public, absolutely would be the dangerous fireworks.
Okay. So, so what I'm driving at, Jeff, is if I'm sitting on this side of the valley and I see, you know, three miles away, bottle rockets being launched, or the stuff that comes home from Hollywood being launched, I'd be better off if I was that officer. I'd be doing better for the city if I went and tried locating and stopped that source.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure.
That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, but I'd like to give everyone else the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Let's see. Elaine, do you want to?
Just, just really, really quickly. I was, also included in the report was that 40-page report about injuries and deaths, et cetera, which we haven't even touched about. But I was touched, I was, I was, I was impressed with, on page 20, it did state, "It is possible that the cessation of public fireworks displays in 2020, because of COVID, caused people to celebrate or do their own displays at home, resulting in a 50% increase in fireworks-related injuries." So I, I just, I think it's mindful too that, that this is a unique time. And some of this increase in, in firework displays, et cetera, at home may well be because of this at home and trying to stay at home and COVID, et cetera. So I just want to be sure that we are mindful of that. I was interested to find that in the report. If we were to do anything beyond what we already have on the books, and I think what I'm hearing from our chief is that, that there's going to be some intent for undercover, et cetera. And I very much appreciate the mayor's observations that should be directed towards dangerous displays, et cetera. But if we were to do anything at all, I know DeeDee had mentioned she liked, liked the model of Oxnard. Maybe it's because I was born on the Fourth of July, but I would go the Ventura route, which was less of a fine, $132 for the safe and sane. But that, but maybe that's why. I like those sparklers, but I know they're illegal. So I'm not promoting them. That's all I'm saying.
The other potential suggestion would be there's multiple cities in LA, especially Monterey Park comes to mind. And they have a double problem is they have huge amounts of fireworks coming in. And that's where the before they're ever used comes in, and undercover police officers. I think they have fully assigned people that do nothing, officers that do nothing, but go after those that are hauling in, shipping in, and then distributing. Okay. So that's one of their problems. But they also have the problem of all of these being ignited on the Fourth. I, I'm one that would think, let's talk to the people that are, are having the issues and how are they handling it? And how successful? We've, we've got the information from Oxnard City. That's a great starting point. So I'm just throwing that out there for, there's, there's other people that are suffering through what we are. And they see how they're doing it and if it's working for them. Which makes a delay, but that's not good, I understand. But on the other hand, making a bad call, because it is a, a unique time in our history too, where people really feel patriotic. They want to celebrate. And by giving them a big fine for a small celebration, I, I'm not so sure that that's something I would support. Maybe a very small fine. And I will hand it to the CME PD that the times I worked with them, they were really, and doing just this on the Fourth of July, they were very much out telling people to be safe, telling them to have a hose out there when they're doing it. And, and I think it's because they knew too. They can't just go out and write tickets because you're only going to write two or three at the very most. So, anyway.
Mayor, if I make, may I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, every year, this city has funded, with the exception of one year, every year the city has funded and we have voted to fund a big free fireworks show at the park. You know, and cities adjacent have fireworks shows that are free. That's something, you know, that I've experienced here for 20 years, which I'm very grateful for. So we're not banning, you know, fireworks, if you know what I'm saying. Like you can still go out and celebrate and see a beautiful, professional, safe fireworks show here in the city of Simi Valley, which I think is amazing, and I think it's an asset to our city. So, you know, I want to make it clear that this is, you know, not saying we're not going to have any fireworks at all. You're still getting your fireworks on your birthday, as well as everybody else on the Fourth of July, that we can celebrate that. But that's why we fund, you know, that's why we fund those programs, so that everyone can enjoy fireworks safely.
You know what? I've known that for many years, just for the record.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying.
I've been on this council.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, we, you know, there is, you know, people can go see a beautiful fireworks show every year here in Simi Valley, which I think is amazing. So I'd like to make a motion if I may, Mayor.
I just want to respond to your comment. There's also a lot of people in our city that come from LA and other areas where there isn't the same firework laws. And they come in, they don't know. And they're celebrating the Fourth of their little fireworks out in the front of their home. So there's, there's a lot of people to be concerned about. It's, it's not just them. And then I think it was you that mentioned the concern about the animals. People are concerned about their animals. So I'm not trying to say one way or another. I'm saying, I think to be quality leaders and compassionate leaders, we need to look at all these issues and come up with the best solution.
Well, the motion is to direct staff to draft a fireworks ordinance incorporating identified enhanced civic or administrative penalty structures for fireworks violations. But we don't have to have the details right now. Is that correct?
I think, well, we need to know now.
Staff can come back with options. Is that correct?
We can come back with options. It, the question is, well, you want to impose civil fines? Do you want to have a social host component to it as well?
Yes. That's my motion. Basically what Councilmember Kavanaugh stated.
I wanted to alter mine a little bit. So she has a motion.
She needs a second. I didn't hear it.
No.
Okay.
The motion fails for lack of a second.
So along those lines, similar, but I'd, I'd like to make a motion, I wanted to separate the safe and sane and the dangerous. And that I didn't do when I originally spoke. So if we leave a safe and sane fine at $100 every time, because they're not going to catch those guys. I do agree with you, the big ones, the, what, the mortars? And then, and then the cherry bombs they put in the mailboxes and stuff like that. Then I would like to have those as the same, the $1,000 per offense and add a social host designation here in Simi for the same thousand.
One second.
Kind of leaves it.
Okay. So we have a motion and second.
Could you, could you state that again? I really, I'm trying to understand exactly what that motion is. I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, that's okay.
And how it differs from what we currently have on the books. That, that, maybe the attorney can, attorney could explain that to me.
Let me take a shot at it. So on the books, we have nothing.
Well, and when I say on the books, I mean, what would, what would the penalty would be with what the state has in place?
The current, the current state fine is up to $1,000 through the Health and Safety Code section.
So there currently is a fine of up to $1,000 already in place for, for dangerous fireworks.
That would be criminal.
That's, that is criminal. That's correct.
Okay. And so.
I believe what Councilmember, right, I believe what Councilmember Kavanaugh is looking for is a, for safe and sane use, the fine would be up to $100. And for dangerous use of, for use of dangerous fireworks would be $1,000.
Which is already in place for dangerous at a thousand.
So it would be an additional $1,000.
But, and I also wanted a social host.
A social host component. So you would, you would have a criminal fine of $1,000 through the Health and Safety Code section.
An additional $1,000.
You should have an additional $1,000 for use of dangerous fireworks as a civil fine. So a total of $2,000 for use of dangerous. Am I correct?
Yeah. I mean, as, as dangerous is defined under the Health and Safety Code.
And what does the social host fine or element look like that DeeDee is proposing?
Means you go after the homeowner where they're having the party.
No, I understand what social host means. But I guess what I'm saying is, so basically it means that any of those fines can be levered, levied against the home, the property owner.
It, it could, depending upon how it's written. That is correct.
Yes.
And we, I would say we, we currently have a social host ordinance with regards to parties. So we do.
So we already have that in place?
We already do have that on the books. If, if our police department is responding to, I don't know what you define them as, out of control parties, I guess. Yeah.
But what's, I'm, I'm losing something here. I apologize. What are we changing then? If they're on the books, I know we wrote citations back, you know, 20 years ago. And those people would be fined.
We're just making more, we're making more law on the city side, civilly, that won't be enforced because nobody will get caught.
Yeah. Correct. Be an administrative fine.
You are adding civil fines on the city side in addition to the criminal fines on the state side.
I'll go back to you guys, but I'd throw it out that we look at. I, I'll go back to you guys, but I'd throw it out that we look at.
But the civil standard is lower than the criminal. I'm sorry, Mayor. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's right. I just, the danger lies in the dangerous. So I, I think we ought to focus on the dangerous and let the police do what they've always done and try controlling an uncontrollable situation of the number of safe and sane and through good PR. And then I also believe that during the, off the Fourth of July, to be far more aggressive.
I, I just want to clarify, yeah. I already voted.
No, and I, and I'm sorry, and so, so if I'm understanding, because I want to understand so I know how to vote, I'm so, so sorry. If, if we go with what DeeDee is recommending, basically the safe, the, the only difference, because we already have the, we already have the social host through partying, so we have that in place already. We have criminal at a thousand in place. The difference then becomes the civil penalty, and that gets assessed by the city, and that means Mr. Casares is going to have to go after them to get that money. Is that?
Civil penalty would be assessed by the city. The social host would, you would have, we'd have to have another social host ordinance to address firework usage.
Thank you, that's what I was going to say, because.
That's currently on the books, is only for.
You could have 10 people at the house and it wouldn't be out of, out of context party or whatever.
DeeDee, does your motion hold the safe and sane to a maximum of a hundred dollars?
Yes.
Without a whole bunch of bureaucratic fees for the process?
Well, isn't that the purpose of a civil, to make the standard lower than criminal? Yes, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I need the way.
Call the question, Mayor. Can we vote?
Call for the vote?
Eeny, meeny, miny, moe. I'm sorry, no, it's not true. I'm not, really not. Well, it's, they'll come back with something and we don't necessarily have to approve the ordinance. Okay.
Okay. The motion passes with Councilmember Judge voting no.
So obviously with the, if we do an ordinance, it has, you have to have second, we have to have second reading before June, so this will have to be back to the council, no later, have to have first reading, no later than the second meeting in May.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 8B, adoption of a resolution amending the compensation and other terms and conditions of the city manager's employment agreement. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2022-17, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley amending the compensation and other terms and conditions employment, employment for the position of city manager. And Jennifer Gutierrez is here to present this item.
There it goes. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. On April 19th, 2021, and February 14th, 2022, the city council completed favorable annual, annual performance evaluations of city manager Brian Paul Gabler. In accordance with the city manager's current employment agreement, Mr. Gabler is eligible for merit salary increases based on his performance. The proposed salary increases are 4% retroactive to December 11th, 2020, and 4% retroactive to December 11, 2021. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution to amend the compensation and other terms and conditions of the city manager's employment agreement to provide for the requested changes and read on the record the required oral report. I am available for questions.
Any questions to staff? Start with DeeDee Kavanaugh.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Ruth, are you?
Oh, no.
Uh-oh, no questions to staff.
Move staff's recommendation.
A second.
Mr. Mayor, I need to read the oral report.
That was the recommendation, to read it. I heard it.
It was read, correct?
No, there, there's a paragraph that has to be read legally, which you can do, which is, right.
Would you like me to read it, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you should.
Okay, thank you. In accordance with Government Code Section 3511.1, a summary of the city manager's salary and benefits is reported as follows. In accordance with the city manager's employment agreement, the city manager will receive a 4% merit salary increase retroactive, retroactively effective to the city manager's actual performance review date of December 11, 2020, which results in the amount of $268,320 for the following year. A 4% merit salary increase is provided retroactively effective to the city manager's actual performance review date of December 11, 2021, in the amount of $284,633.85. This includes the benefits and compensation as they apply to the city manager's at fourth in more detail in Resolution Number 2020-50.
Mr. Mayor, amend my motion to, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-17 to amend the compensation and offer terms and conditions of the city manager's employment agreement.
A second.
Call for the vote? Do you want to leave the room?
The motion passes with Councilmember Lovenos voting no. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 9A, city council member report.
Okay, we'll start off with Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, oh, correction, it's, Tuesday, March 1st, I attended the donor wall dedication at the Free Clinic of Simi Valley. It was a great ceremony there, put up on the wall inside the Free Clinic, all the major donors to the project, including City of Simi Valley, County of Ventura, and the State of California. So that was a very nice thing, and like I said, our Free Clinic is an amazing place. If you haven't got a chance, they'll give you a tour. They love giving tours. On Thursday, March 3rd, I attended SCAG's Regional Council and Policy Committee meetings. Nothing to report out of there. On March 4th, I attended VCTC's meeting. VCTC, we did have a good discussion on regionalization of our transit programs. We're looking forward for that report from VCTC coming out, telling what the best way to go is going to be. We just wanted to make sure, well, it's my goal to make sure that the people doing the report about transit in our county were aware the regionalization is something that is on the table, it's something that should be looked at. Later that evening, on Friday, March 4th, I attended the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce Salute Excellence, and I want to congratulate all the winners from that night. On Saturday, March 5th, I attended For the Troops Gala. They were honoring Gulf War-era veterans. So everybody that served during the Gulf War was being honored. I happened to be one of them. On Wednesday, March 9th, correction, Thursday, March 10th, I attended the Youth Council's Youth Summit and Town Hall over at the Reagan Library. I got there a little late, I was able to stay through lunch, talk to some of our guys from the Youth Council. They did a great job, as they always do, always amazed by our Youth Council, the way they put that on. Ran a little shorter this year because the, of the way they had to combine both of them together, but I still think it was worthwhile and all the kids, during the panel I saw, it was great. Chief got some questions, did a great job answering. Thank you, Chief, for being there and helping. Later that evening, on March 10th, I attended the Sir Optimus Live Your Dream Awards Ceremony with, see, I usually don't say I'm with other councilmembers because I want them to be able to talk about it too, and not take the fire from them, because everybody wants to speak. But DeeDee was there, Elaine was there. It was a great, great thing, and Sir Optimus are so generous with their, with their giving. They helped out a lot of single mothers fulfill their educational needs. It's outstanding. On Friday, March 11th, I toured Waste Management with Councilmember Lister. Very informative tour, very eye-opening, and I think they're doing a great job, and Waste Management is one of the best business partners our city has when it comes to private, private and public partnerships. On Friday, March 11th, I also attended the grand opening of the Need, For the Need Foundation. This is one of the, one of the institutions that are situated inside the Free Clinic's building, because the Free Clinic, if you don't know, it came out of a under-one-roof program that was proposed by former Mayor Paul Miller. And that program kind of fell because of some criminal dealings that went on inside of it, nothing to do with the people involved, it was just one person. So like when I say that, I always want to make sure that there's, all of our nonprofits in the city are, are the greatest. They do the best they possibly can for the people they, they want to help. For the Need Foundation is a foundation that helps children, and it is, it is a member of the, of the facility inside, along with Soaring Spirits and some other nonprofits. Later that evening, on March 11th, I, I attended the First Responders of the Year Awards Dinner at the Elks Lodge here in Simi Valley. Our Elks Lodge does amazing things for our first responders, they also support our veterans, they do a lot of good by giving money to different charities in the city. One of them happens to be the Police Foundation. So Elks Lodge, I can't say enough good things about. I was also there with DeeDee Kavanaugh and Mayor Pro Tem Elaine Lister. That's my report. Oh, I want to say today, I did attend the Council on Aging Meeting.
You'll find out that Mayor Litz, Mayor Pro Tem Lister and Councilmember Judge and I hung out a lot the last two weeks, so.
That scares me.
I know, it is scary, isn't it? I also attended the Free Clinic, the donor wall dedication, which was very nice. It was, all the Rotary Clubs donated, individuals donated. It was really good to see the city, the county represented there. It was, it was very nice, they were very excited about that, and it looks really sharp when you walk in the door. On Wednesday, March 2nd, I had my EDC Executive Board meeting. I won't go into a whole lot of detail because we'll be covering it on our meeting next week. On Friday, March 4th, I also attended the Salute to Excellence Gala up at the, at the vineyards. It was very nice. It was nice to see everybody's smiling faces. It was one of the first big events with no masks required, and it, people were very, very appreciative, I think, of being able to actually see and, and talk to people and see their smiles and such. So it was very nice. I did want to congratulate all the winners. I can't remember all the names, but a special shout out to Jonathan Karahara and Fred Bowermeister, because they both served the Free Clinic. Jonathan just stepped down as the medical director after 25 years, and then Fred is still 51 years with the Free Clinic. He can't get away. We're not letting him get away with anything, so congratulations to them and all the other winners also. On Thursday, March 10th, I also attended the Sir Optimus Live Your Dream Awards. It was wonderful because, like Mike said, they support women, Women's History Month, perfect time to do that, and there were eight winners. So they made cash awards for like scholarships to eight different young women, and the majority of them had children, little children, or were single parents, and it really makes a big deal to them that it, from the $500 up to whatever the maximum was, it makes a big deal, and you could see it in their faces, you could see how appreciative they were. The one lady had the cutest little girls too, they were just adorable. On Friday, March 11th, I also attended the grand opening for the Need Foundation. Dorina Timble, here from one of our locals, is the new CEO. It was a great grand opening, she explained what they did. It is something that we really need in our area, so it's a perfect addition to the Multi-Services Center. And I also attended the First Responders of the Year Awards Dinner with Councilmember Judge and Mayor Pro Tem Elaine Lister, and we were able to offer or honor a park ranger for the first time, was included in one of our Ranches Simi Park Rangers, and we had fire there too. And then we had Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Department, AMR, and then our own Officer Jean Colletto was honored as the Officer of the Year from Simi Valley PD. And that's the end of my report.
All right. Councilmember Louvenos.
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, March 3rd, I attended the Board of Directors Meeting for Clean Power Alliance. We extended the Need to Meet remotely in accordance with the public health officials who strongly encourage the use of mask-wearing. We expressed our support for electric, for AB 1814, which is electrification of transportation. To that end, I would like us to continue to pursue the ability to have electric buses. One of the advantages of that is a lot of the newer electric buses have Wi-Fi on board, and I believe that that would encourage ridership within the City of Simi Valley, because every, who doesn't want Wi-Fi, right? That's where everyone goes to Starbucks. So we supported that. We also ratified the New Gen Cost of Service Task Order, and we looked over the fiscal year rates and the outlook for energy prices for the year 2022, 2023. You know, there is some volatility in the market right now because of what's happening in Ukraine, but you know, we can make our own outlooks based on, you know, solar and we know, you know, the renewable energy sources like solar, like wind, like thermal, those are not, you know, dependent on fossil fuel. And so we can make a pretty good assessment of what that will look like. We are very cognizant of making sure that we include the ability for low-income residents to opt into 100% renewable energy. There were, Camarillo is the most recent city in Ventura County to opt into the 100% renewable energy tier, which means you can opt into others, but if you are low-income and you want to opt into 100% renewable energy, we're still offering that incentive, so you get a 20% discount, so your bill would be the same whether you were 100% renewable energy or whether you were not 100% renewable energy. Also discussion of whether or not those tiers are going to go away and the implementation of time of use, which will be happening for all electric customers very soon. For the next quarter, because of the way that we set our rates, and you know, guesstimating on what the price of energy would be, those who are CPA customers will notice about a 30% reduction in your electric bill for the next quarter, which is wonderful. And so that's my report from Clean Power Alliance. On Tuesday, March 8th, I was on a Zoom call for International Day of the Woman with a number of other Latina leaders in Ventura County in Southern California, which was pretty cool. And on Friday, March 11th, I was able to attend, I was invited to attend a grid construction event, so Grid Alternatives, which is a minority female-led organization that actually encourages women in construction, which is wonderful, because you may not know that this week was Women in Construction Week. And so it was beautiful to see these women of color that are leaders in Cabrillo Economic Development, which is a nonprofit that helped Grid Alternatives design and build and install these solar panels. So there is a, a low-income senior housing facility, it's right near where Simi Valley Little League Baseball is, right by the railroad tracks on Catherine, and it's a low-income senior, little cottages, they're so cute. And what they did was they installed these solar panels on their carport, and that will enable all of the residents in Camino Esperanza to have a lower electricity bill by 20 to 30%. So they're all going to benefit in this, they didn't have to pay anything. This was a collaboration between Cabrillo Economic Development and Grid Alternatives. They said they would love to come back to Simi Valley and do more of this. We do have a lot of low-income seniors on fixed incomes, and you know, they were very appreciative of it. As a matter of fact, one of the residents came by and brought tacos from Taco Bell for all the, all the people that were there. So I'd love to see more of this collaboration here in this, here in the city, especially for our low-income residents. And today, I want to wish you all a happy Pi Day, because it is March 14th, and my daughter had a competition at her school, and she knew pie to such a, more of a place value than anybody else, so she brought home an apple pie from San Salvador High School. So I encourage all of the STEM teachers and math teachers especially, thank you for celebrating Pi Day in your own fun and wacky ways, and I appreciate that. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Lister.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I will say it has been very nice hanging out with Councilmember Louvenos and Councilmember Judge, I'm sorry, Councilmember DeeDee Kavanaugh and Councilmember Judge at several events, and I'll just touch on them briefly. March 1st, Tuesday, I2 was at the Free Clinic Celebration of all the donors. One of the things I wanted to just quickly mention, and I think DeeDee touched on that, it is called the Simi Valley Multi-Services Center. And as we referenced, there are other places that are now, are part of that wonderful facility. What I loved was Mr. Bowermeister's description, as he explained this beautiful wall, donor wall, he explained that he recognized the donors who had contributed to the under-one-roof project, which, which meant its demise, it through no fault of their own, and he, he recognized those donors, they are part of this wall as well, that all of those who've contributed to, to these services are, are recognized there regardless of whether it was historically 10 years ago or, or current. And it's just a, a beautiful celebration to all the partners that put this facility together. On Thursday, March 3rd, I also attended a SCAG meeting for Energy and Environment Policy Committee. The one, there wasn't much, but the one thing that I did, that did catch my, that I thought was of, of value is to promote. value is to promote is that SCE does put out, provide grants to provide wiring for EV charging stations, but doesn't necessarily pay for the installation, et cetera. There are grants now, particularly they're being offered for new development, that will do the last mile of those EV charging stations, will basically will provide the hardware and the actual full cost to get it installed, and so they were promoting those grants, and certainly that's something we should share, I'm sure, with our developers as they come and are working in their projects here. Tuesday, March 8th, I attended the Simi Valley Ed Foundation Teacher of the Month where we honored Carly Haynes, a kindergarten teacher at Hollow Hills, and appreciate all of our educators in this community and all that they do. On Wednesday, March 9th, I attended the Task Force on Business Recovery. On Thursday, March 10th, I also attended the Youth Council Youth Summit Symposium, which was a mashup of their leadership conference and their, whatever they call that, Town Hall, Town Hall, thank you, I've got to get the right two terms, it was a mashup. And I just have to tell you, it was incredibly done, and I want to say a big thank you to Kristin Tignack for her leadership and her role in making that happen at the Reagan Library, truly was a wonderful, wonderfully event. And in the Q and A period, they did have our own Chief Livingstone, thank you for being there, and Dr. Hana Youssef, and Dr. Angelica Chavez, the three of them. The questions were insightful and that the youth were asking, and I thought the answers were very meaningful. What I really appreciated, we need to watch out, those youth who are conducting this, they were on top of it, in fact, even as some of them tried to dodge the question, they redirected them back and said, "Well, thank you for that answer, but you didn't answer my question." And so it was clear that those youth understand, they will not be deterred in their leadership, and so I commend them. At four o'clock, I'm sorry, that afternoon, I attended the VCOG meeting. A presentation was held there about an initiative to add a 5% sales tax to our ballot to pay for transportation issues. And what I appreciated, it was the pros and cons.
Half cent.
Half cent, did I say 0.5%?
I think it's five percent.
Point, I'm sorry, 0.5%, which is a half cent sales, I'm, ooh, thank you for helping me clarify, that's a huge difference, 0.5% half-cent sales tax. What I appreciated is that they provided, those who are proponents are suggesting that because this is a donor, an initiative, a public initiative, that this threshold for passage is just 50%, whereas if it were coming from a city entity or a municipality, the threshold is 2/3. What is also interesting, of course, is they explained as well that, and I think some are aware, that our county commissioners voted 3 to 2 to basically allow for a special bill, because basically there's a top amount that we can charge sales tax, we're nowhere near that, but Oxnard, if I'm not mistaken, was at that top, and so it was voted to allow a larger sales tax possibility so that this, this sales tax could be put on the ballot and considered by the entire, by our entire county. So we'll see where all that goes, but it was interesting discussion, pros and cons. That evening, I too attended the Seroptimus Live Your Dream Awards Ceremony. Congratulations to the wonderful women who are honored. I also want to say a special thank you to Samantha Argabrite of our own city, who was part of, one of the judges who interviewed all 11 or so of the recipients, and that was a time commitment, but I appreciate her willingness to do that. On Friday, March 11th, I appreciate the tour that Councilmember Judge and I took of the Waste Management Facility, it was very educational, very enlightening, and we really do have, as Councilmember Judge said, in our community, state-of-the-art waste processing facility, and it was great to see what's happening there. In the middle of that, Councilmember Judge surprised us with a Eagle presentation, and so I wondered why he was carrying a certificate around with him, but he, we recognized a Boy Scout, an Eagle Scout, who was there installing an owl box, owl box, and I'm sorry, I don't recall his name, maybe Mike can come up with it.
Sebastian Gumpels?
There you go, that's who it was. So anyway, it was wonderful to honor him there. Again, appreciated attending the For the Need Foundation Grand Opening, also appreciated attending the First Responders of the Year Award with the, at the Elks Club with my colleagues, and it was nice to acknowledge those, sometimes we forget who all of our first responders are. And so for me, it was enlightening to see, it was CHP, it was the Sheriff's Station, it was the police, it was the Park Rangers, it was fire, and it was EMT, and because I didn't know as much, I actually went and sat down with the EMT table to become enlightened, and maybe that sometime would be a good presentation, but I don't think I realized that the only source of their income comes from billing through private billing when someone is, needs to be taken to the hospital, that they receive no financial support from municipalities, it's quite the opposite, they pay for the opportunity to operate. So I was, anyway, it was enlightening, it was education for me, but I commend the Elks Club for doing that and putting that together, it was outstanding. Yes, it was good to attend the Council on Aging, great things are happening there today with Councilmember Judge, and that concludes my report, good things happening in Simi Valley.
Very good. Myself, I also went to the Free Clinic, and I forgot already the name you told me it was.
Simi Valley Multi-Services Center, there we go.
The Free Clinic.
Yeah.
The Free Clinic is in the Multi-Services Center.
It's going to be the Free Clinic as long as I'm around. Anyway, the donor wall program dedication was very nice, can't say enough about all the donors, and the people you see there is amazing, and the doctors you see there, when you go in and you see your own doctor, and he's working for free there, but when you go to his office, it's not quite for free, but it tells you the quality that they have at the Free Clinic. Moving right along, I went to the Salute to Excellence Gala for the Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to remind Mike Judge that it was a five-star chamber. And I remembered Dee Dee exactly, the Business of the Year was the Rose Family Funeral Home, and the Business Person of the Year was Nikki Leann, CKO Kickboxing, and that lady has so much energy, and if she knows kickboxing, I wouldn't want to be on the wrong side of her because I'm sure she can take care of herself. Nonprofit Organization of the Year was 99.1, the Ranch Radio Station. Community Volunteer of the Year, which was extremely deserving, the individual, Mike Court, a guy that does so much for the city and asks so little of it. And then Emerging Leader of the Year was Style Attics, and this is a cool one, Strathern Lifetime Achievement Award, it went to Dr. Jonathan Kurahara, extremely deserving and kind of touching since we just recently lost Mr. Strathern. The Legacy Award, he did a really good job too.
Fred?
Yeah, Fred, Fred Bauermeister. And Ambassador of the Year is Karen Hoyle, who you see her constantly at every event, taking pictures and helping make things happen at the five-star chamber. Mike? Let's see, on Tuesday, March 8th, I attended the EAC meeting with the Chamber, and, wait a minute, is that it?
EDC.
EDC, I'm sorry. And Linda Swan couldn't be there, so we had to settle for Brian Gabler as the reporting guy on what's going on in the city, and we'll be back to normal next time. I really am sorry, I was on my way to the Youth Council Summit, and a couple of things came up, I was hanging around City Hall too much, and I somehow kept messing around finding work to do, and it was too late to go, so I apologize for that, and I'm glad you folks went, and it was a good time. And then I did the big note, oh man, I, on Friday, I snuck out of here, went to Texas and saw my grandson play in Little League, who has, I think they moved back there like in October, November, and so it was a real quick trip, I mean, it was like, go there, watch baseball games, and then come right back home, so.
Wasn't it somebody's birthday?
I'm sorry?
Somebody's birthday too.
It's going to be my wife's birthday, yeah.
You just wish yours?
Nah. Anyway, it was a good time, and all went well here. All right, so the next item. Where are we? Okay, requests for future City Council Agenda items.
Mayor, I have two requests, if I may.
Okay, Councilman Louvenos.
I wish.
Councilmember Louvenos.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. I would like to make, well, I don't know if it's a motion, but it's a 9B request for all emailed comments to be read aloud if they are indicated that they are to be read as public comment with a time limit of three minutes per email.
Okay, second on that to bring up at a future meeting? I think it failed.
Motion fails.
No second, okay.
Okay. My second motion, my second request is there was hate speech that was posted in Ventura County, seen on the 101 Overpass, with banners from white supremacists talking about securing the existence and future for white children. This was acknowledged as hate speech by the Anti-Defamation League. These 14 words are hate speech that is anti-Semitic, racist, and xenophobic, it was a phrase coined by the leader of a white supremacist terrorist group, whom I will not give the respective naming, and I would like us to, at the very least, make a statement that hate speech is not welcomed here, that everyone is equal, and that at the very least, we don't welcome people who bring this kind of hatred into our community.
Just a proclamation for that?
We did do that last year, yes.
Clearly, we need to make a stronger stance if it's still happening in our county.
What off-ramp was this?
This was off the 101 in Newberry Park, and it's happened twice already.
Do you honestly believe that making, that that's going to have any effect on the person that wrote that? Do you honestly believe that?
If we don't call it out, then it's going to continue to happen, and it's already happened here, and it's going to continue to happen across the county.
So you do, you honestly believe that this is going to affect the person that wrote that?
I believe that, I believe that if we don't take a stand, then we're, then you all are acknowledging that it's okay.
Oh.
And I'm not okay with that.
I think we all decry hate speech, I can't imagine anyone here, I mean, we all decry it, there was a, we had a proclamation last year, I'm not, because I'm not understanding, you think there should be an annual proclamation, or anytime something happens, we should, we should say we don't like it? I guess I'm trying to understand, of course we don't like it, of course it's reprehensible, but I don't understand how, what your, what the request is that would, that would make sense, is there a certain regularity we should be doing this? What is the request?
You know, I just don't see how we can stand back and say nothing, and do nothing. We need to, you know, implement policy, we are policymaking, and I've asked for this to be brought forth previously, and I'll ask for it again. You know, if we have employees that are wearing tattoos with this, you know, that is clearly a phrase that is coined as hate speech, I don't know how they can serve the diverse population and residents here in the city of Simi Valley.
Do you know of a specific employee that has that? If so, I would report it to HR and have them investigate.
So then is that a policy that we're willing to make?
I don't think it needs to be a policy.
Oh, then we're not willing to put actions behind our words.
Don't put words into my mouth, Ms. Louvenos, that's, I think, I think we've done a very nice proclamation last year, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Lister, that I don't believe anybody up here is in favor of hate speech of any type, and that we would all vote against it and say that we want nothing to do with it here in our community. Thank you.
Then it's okay for us to put it into policy.
I think there's been adequate discussion on it without violating the Brown Act, and I think the question is whether or not she wants to agendize this and whether or not there's a.
Okay, if we want, if you wanted to agendize, then we'd need a second, and we need to turn it over, so we need a motion. Did you make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to implement that as policy.
Okay, so we need a second.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Anybody else, any, your name's still up, council member? Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, because my first motion failed, can I make another motion?
Yes.
May we as council members read emailed comments into the public record? Since you mentioned Greg Lister's emailed comment, I'd like to make sure that the rest of us have that opportunity as well.
Would that just be a response? Maybe that, this is a question for Mr. Casares, would that be, I mean, we have one minute and a half to three minutes to make a response, could that just, could someone choose to use that time to read someone's email response?
Yes.
Well, with all due respect, the mayor had four minutes to respond to that comment, we get 90 seconds, so I'd like it to be fair.
Well, I don't think it was fair, if you notice, I rarely do something like that. So that was a special note, and if you want to give me some kind of fine me or do something negative to me for doing that, go right ahead.
I'm just, I'm just asking for equity, Mayor.
I fully expect anything from you against me on that, and that's fine, no, we're not going to change the protocol.
So we're not allowed to read email comments?
No.
We can read email comments as our response, I think that was what.
That was my legal advice and recommendation.
That's why we have, we have an email, we can respond right back, I do it, I hope you do it, I think everybody does it. Now you're saying, now you want to change to make it public?
No, in the past, we read email comments.
One time I did it, and you want to be fair, well, guess what? Nail me, do something bad to me.
I am, I'm calling you all right now, I'm calling you accountable.
Discipline me.
Make sure that all of us have 40 minutes.
Discipline me, go to HR.
If you've got four minutes, I'd like four minutes too.
And get me for being unfair, go right ahead.
I'm just asking for equity.
Enjoy yourself doing it too, by the way.
There was no second, just.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
And just to be clear with Mr. Casares, all of these emails that we receive, if they're supposed, if they're for public comment, they get attached to the minutes, is that correct? Is that, or they, or does it just come to us?
I think they just come to us and are.
They're just, they're coming to you.
They're just coming to us, okay.
As a normal course of business.
Okay, thank you, okay.
But I also just want to clarify, if a council member wants to read one particular email during his or her time in response, they can do that, they can do that, but it has to be within a reasonable amount of time.
Sure. Would that be 90 seconds or four minutes?
Well, I think it's, what, it's reasonable, I've never found anything that actually talks about 90 seconds, but it's a reasonable amount of time. The Brown Act requires, just to clarify, a brief response to statements made or questions posed by members of the public. On their own initiative, a council member may respond to questions by a member of the public, ask question for clarification, make a brief announcement, make a brief report on his or her actions, and you can also provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information. That's consistent with what the Brown Act requires.
And you've never violated that, I assume?
Not to the extent of four minutes.
Are you sure? Can you show me your records?
Well, Mayor, I'm just asking for equity, I'm not asking for more than you, I'm asking for the same, that's what equity is.
Call personnel. All right, tonight, once again, we keep up our bad record of saying goodbye to good friends. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of Veronica Benton Court, and she was the wife of Jose Benton Court, who is a public works maintenance worker with us, and a couple of great people, great parents, that's very, very sad to see that happen, they had, I think it was four young children, so a little adjourn in memory tonight of Veronica. Also Irene Peterson, she's the former Deputy Director of Administrative Services. Also Irene Peterson, she's the former Deputy Director of Administrative Services. And one that's close to most of us is Bill Godfelti. Bill is the husband of Barbara Godfelti, who does all kinds of work for this community at all the different nonprofit events throughout the city. She used to work up at the Lost Canyons, and Bill was there often, but he usually kept kind of in the background and never said a whole lot, and when he did say something, it was funny, I guarantee it. He had a real dry sense of humor and was quite funny and a great guy to be around, so we'll say goodbye to Bill. And with that, meeting's adjourned.